Good morning, everyone. Please be seated. It is my pleasure to call the Renfro County Council meeting of Wednesday, October 26, 2022, to order. Before we start, I need a motion to amend the agenda to add delegation C, which will be the Renfro and Area Chamber of Commerce Community Awards, please. I need a mover and a seconder. Councilor Donahue, Councilor Pecat, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. And I want to welcome everyone that's in the gallery today. It's very nice to see you. As we gather this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the Algonquin people. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history, and we are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. I will now ask everyone to stand for a moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Roll call, Mr. Kelly, please.
Thank you, Warden. Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Bros?
Present.
Counselor Doncaster?
Here.
Counselor Donahue?
Here.
Counselor Emo?
Present.
Counselor Grills?
Here.
Counselor Hunt?
Here.
Counselor Keller?
Here.
Counselor Love? Counselor Lynch?
Here.
Counselor Murphy?
Knight is here.
Counselor Pecat?
Present.
Counselor Regeer?
Present.
Counselor Reinhold?
Present.
Uh, Warden Robinson?
Present.
Counselor Sweet?
Present.
Counselor TJ?
Here.
Thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. And for those watching by Zoom, Counselor Murphy is ill, but she's here and she's on Zoom. So thank you very much for showing up today, Counselor Murphy. Any disclosure of curative interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, I need a mover and a seconder to adopt the minutes of the meeting of September 28th, 2022. Moved by Counselor Bros, seconded by Counselor Reinwald. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Members of county council, during the month of October, I attended 17 meetings on county business. On October 6th and 7th, I attended two AML board meetings in Toronto. One was an orientation session, the other a Folsom Board meeting led by Executive Director Brian Rosenberg. One of the major topics was Bill Three, the Strong Mayors Building Homes Act, which gives mayors some extraordinary powers. Every municipal politician would have received a request from AML to fill out a survey in regards to this bill. If you haven't already done so, please complete the questionnaire. If you did not receive one, please let us know and one will be forwarded to you. On October 13th, I chaired a meeting of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus held in Northumberland County. Discussion was held on the 2023 budget. However, at my request, the caucus endorsed the budget but did not pass the budget. I've asked that be done at the inaugural meeting in January with the new caucus members. We also approved plans for the 2023 inaugural meeting of the EOWC, the Roma 2023 delegation request to the ministers, to reflect the EOWC's priorities, which are housing, healthcare, human resources, and family physician recruitment. These priorities, however, could change with the incoming new caucus. We also received a housing priority update, including a review of a possible regional housing initiative that is still in its infancy, and a review of the regional housing information system, which is an interactive tool to help municipalities and developers in Eastern Ontario. And finally, we discussed Bill Three. We had the pleasure of welcoming Peter Sizov, Municipal Administrator, excuse me, Municipal Advisor with the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, who gave us an update on ministry services. The caucus also had an opportunity to share with him in some of our thoughts on Bill Three, which we asked to be taken back to Minister Clarke. On October 18th, I, along with paramedic chief Michael Nolan and Counselor Michael Donahue, met with MPP John Jordan regarding the continuation of the Community Paramedic Program for Long Term Care and the Renfro County Virtual Triage and Assessment Centre. As a new MPP and a former executive director of ConnectWell, he is attuned to the health challenges we are all facing. I believe he will be a very good ally moving forward. In relation to Renfro County VTAC, I sent a letter to Minister of Health Sylvia Jones asking for an in-person meeting. However, I have not received a reply. Also, as many of you will recall, during Zoom sessions with the province in regards to COVID, Premier Ford made sure we all had his cellphone number. I never used it until last week, when I sent him a text asking him to meet with me regarding Renfro County VTAC. I anticipate a reply any day now. On October 20th, I, along with CAO Craig Kelly and Director of Development and Property Jason Davis, met with the Community Futures Development Corporation Board Chair Ray Bonnenberg and Executive Director Cindy Phillips to discuss partnerships and their ability to best serve the entrepreneurs. Community Futures has been very successful locally, supporting many innovative business ventures. Its long-term presence in the county is very important, and should this council be asked to advocate for the CFDC in the months to come, I sincerely hope you agree to do so. On November 3rd, we will be celebrating County of Renfro Day at Queen's Park, where many of our entrepreneurs will showcase their businesses and the Ontario Winter Games Committee will highlight its activities. We will also have a booth set up to ensure all MPPs in attendance have an opportunity to learn about Renfro County Virtual Triage and Assessment Centre and why we are fighting so hard for funding to be continued after March 31st, 2023. On behalf of council, I wish to express my sincere condolences to the family of former Reeve of the Township of South Ogona, Rita Culhane, who passed away on September 25th. Mrs. Culhane was Reeve of the Township of Ogona South from 1992 to 2000. The township was amalgamated into the Township of Bonnyshe Valley in 2001. Finally, I want to thank this council and members of the senior leadership team and all other staff for the support I received while being Warden for the past three years. This term of council has been tumultuous, to say the least. We have faced our challenges together and head-on, and we have had many successes. While COVID has dominated the last two years, as a council, we have also put in place the building blocks for a solid future for the County of Renfro. Our legacy will be projects like the Algonquin Trail, the many capital projects completed in the last four years, and the continued evolution of our community paramedic program. Let's face it, it wouldn't be a county council meeting if I didn't end with Renfro County Virtual Triage and Assessment Centre. I know who's counting, but there's a prize at the end. I am still very optimistic that before my last day on November the 23rd, I will receive a letter indicating that we have funding after March 31st, 2023. It has been a great experience, and ending my political career at the same time as my term as Warden comes to a close feels right. For those members of council not returning, you should be very proud of the many accomplishments we have achieved together. I want to encourage the next council to not shy away from the many difficult decisions that you will face. If it's good for our municipalities and it's good for our residents, then it's worth fighting for. I will remind those assembled here of the following: the County of Renfro, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my final address for county council. Almost made it. With that, we have a number of delegations this morning. The first one is a check presentation to the Phoenix Centre, and I understand we have Catherine Leonard, Administrative Assistant, and Jerry Plont, Manager of Financial Services. And I would ask Chief Nolan to come forward, please, sir.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Warden. Usually, it's Mayor Murphy who says, "Please stop talking," so I'm not going to cry, before I get started. So I think we all share in the emotion and the roller coaster that we've all been on for many years under your leadership. So thank you for that. It's my pleasure to be here today to be able to support an effort that occurred on September 25th at Mattaway Park, whereby the paramedic service joined forces with all emergency services to create an opportunity for them to come out in this sort of intra-pandemic period and be able to raise money for our community. And it's a real pleasure that we hosted the second annual event on September 25th and had the opportunity to raise $892.75 for an exceptional organization, and that's the Phoenix Centre for Children and Families. And I'm really happy to have both Jerry and Catherine here with us to receive a check in this amount. But the reason that we chose the Phoenix Centre as the beneficiary of this year's race was really for the exceptional work that they've done throughout the pandemic and what we perceive as an epidemic of mental health crisis in our community affecting both children and families, and in many respects have touched the lives of the work of paramedics and all emergency services through that time period. The Phoenix Centre also stepped up in a big way during the pandemic as a result of the work that we had done through VTAC. And just to tie it back for you, Madam Warden, they stood up and joined our steering committee to represent the mental health sector in Renfro County and through that development led the availability of 24/7 mental health supports for residents of our community through virtual access. So really, it became a sister program to VTAC based upon the exceptional work that they've done day-to-day grinding it out for many years. And we hope that this small contribution on our behalf does something to be able to support their work, if not an expression of support, a bit of money to go towards your programs so that the families and children have less of a burden in accessing service going forward. With that, I'm going to invite Jerry, Madam Warden, to just explain what the Phoenix Centre is. I think this is critically important. When Jerry's finished, we'll present the check and grab a quick picture and go from there. So Jerry, if you want to join me at the podium.
Welcome, Jerry. Nice to see you.
Yes, nice to see you. Thank you very much for including us, and thank you very much to the paramedics for doing the wonderful fundraising for us. We hit the COVID season like everybody else, and it put another burden on stress and mental health needs in the community, specifically the virtual counselling, which was not well-received at the start but had to be received. And we continue to see all kinds of clients and families virtually or in person as needed. Specifically, this donation, it comes at a perfect time. We have a great waitlist now, and we see so many families in need near Christmas. And every year, we've tried to assist with food or presents for children. And again, this is the perfect timing of this generous donation. So thank you very much. And on behalf of Susan Kennedy, our new executive director, we're very proud to be here and thank you for your support.
That's great. Thank you. So we'll just step forward here, grab a quick picture, and go from there. Craig, you joining us?
So Chief, I'm assuming you're going to stay up with us and present the Governor General's Emergency Medical Services Exemplary Service Awards.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you and members of council. The Emergency Medical Services Exemplary Service Medal was created in 1994 by then-Governor General Romeo LeBlanc as part of the Canadian Honours System and is awarded by the Governor General of Canada to persons engaged in the provision of pre-hospital emergency medical services who have contributed greatly in terms of length of service and commitment to advancement of the profession. And it recognizes those professionals who have performed their duties in an exemplary manner, characterized by the highest standards of good conduct, industry, and efficiency. I do want to differentiate, this is not a long service medal. This isn't a you get to 20, 22 years and get a medal. This is for exemplary service. This is the highest honour within our profession that one can achieve. And the application process and the selection by the Governor General's Heraldic Society is very stringent, and I just want to reinforce that. Because when we talk about these recipients and their notable commitment and involvement, not only to profession but also to their communities, each recipient must have served the Canadian public for at least 20 years in this meritorious manner. At the Governor General's Emergency Medical Services Awards for 2022, and this was at the Ontario Association of Paramedic Chiefs Fall Meeting, paramedics Jan Farrell and Jerry Slabosian, who are with us here today, have received the honour from Canada's Surgeon General, Major General Mark Bilado, serving as the official representative for the Governor General of Canada herself, Honourable Mary Simpson. So when we think about what this represents in terms of their service to the community, I think it's also fair to say, and it was very, very nice to have both of their partners and family with us at the medal ceremony, because as many of you know, the role that they play in community doesn't stop at four o'clock. It's 24 hours a day, it's seven days a week, and has a lot of personal sacrifice by their families as well. And I think that both of these representatives would acknowledge, one happens to be also a paramedic and the other serving in the military. And so service really is part of their families, as it is part of our families, and which is why all of you have effectively volunteered your time to represent your communities. So when we think about that, I just want to, on behalf of members of this chamber and the entire paramedic service, congratulate both Jan and Jerry for their exemplary service, the important work that they've done, and their truly life commitment and calling towards serving the public as paramedics. So if you want to come forward, I'd appreciate that very much. I did offer for Jan and Jerry to wax us with their thoughts and emotions that they're having at this time. They've respectfully declined, as you can imagine. So we'll just take a picture and wish them well in this incredible achievement.
Again, our sincere congratulations to both of you. I will now ask our Director of Long Term Care, Mike Blackmore, to come to the podium, please, sir. Mike Blackmore, to come to the podium, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden Robinson, through you to council. I am very pleased to welcome, by way of Zoom, Administrator Dean Quaid and members of the management team and staff in recognition of the Bonner Shire Matter being awarded the Renfrew area Chamber of Commerce 2022 Local Hero Award, awarded this past Thursday. This award is presented in recognition of a person or team of people who strive to help their community during the COVID-19 pandemic and have made a real difference to their community for the safety and benefit of others and who are true inspirations to the community who inspire others. Bonner Shire Manor staff are commended for their perseverance in the delivery of quality resident care in these most challenging times. Certainly, these past two and a half years with COVID, particularly in long-term care, has been a particular challenge with regard to, number one, keeping our residents safe and cared for and ameliorating many of the concerns with regard to limited access, to numerous outbreaks and what have you, numerous changes with regard to directives and having to communicate those directives to family and staff, something we continue to do to this very day. But I think we're very fortunate in that with the advent of the vaccine and the precautions we put into place, we're keeping our residents safe. And we're starting to see, even in the cases where there are infections, that the effects are far worse than they were in the beginning of this pandemic. We are truly appreciative of this most thoughtful accolade that is representative of the incredible community spirit of Renfrew and for the community's support. And thank you very much to the Renfrew area Chamber of Commerce and for this great honor bestowed upon our home. Just like to say fantastic job, everyone, at the matter. We could see you there in the community center. Dean, are you visible? It's a wide shot. Looks like we've got quite a gathering. It looks like the mic is off. There he is. Anyway, I just want to say thank you very much to the matter and to council. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blackmore. Now, we did see Dean go by the camera. Is there a mic available for him if he wanted to speak? Or if he can hear me and he doesn't want to speak, just wave no. There he is. I hear the mic. Dean, you'll have to get a lot closer to the mic for her to hear you, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Sorry for the up-close shot here, but limited technical things here at the matter. But I just wanted to say thank you to County Council for recognizing us. It has been a struggle the past two and a half years, but the staff here have done unbelievable things for our residents and their families. And we'd like to thank the Renfrew Chamber of Commerce for this recognition and our local community. So I think Mike summed up everything for us. But again, just wanted to thank you all for this recognition.
Well, we're all very, very proud of you and very pleased that the Chamber of Commerce has recognized the services that you and your staff at Bonner Shire Manor provide your residents. You know, each month, we hear at Health Committee about what's happening in long-term care facilities, and again, at County Council. And we always say, please, share with staff how proud we are, how thankful we are that you are here to support some of our most vulnerable citizens. And again, thanks never seems to be enough, but thank you from the bottom of our hearts. That ends our delegations, I believe, Mr. Kelly. So correspondence, sir.
Thank you, Warden. And correspondence has been forwarded to the appropriate committee, but with your indulgence, I'll address two items. One was a kind note from former CIO Paul Morrow, who you may see later today, that if I could, Warden, "Dear Warden Robinson and members of County Council, I want to thank you for making my last meeting of council such a wonderful and memorable event. I also want to say thank you for the special gift. All the best in the future to all members of council. Kindness regards, Paul Morrow." And Warden, if I could.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Warden. Like you, last night, we received a letter from Minister Steve Clark on the More Homes Built Faster Ontario's Housing Supply Action Plan 2022-2023. I bring this up because it's something that we believe proposes bold and transformative action to get 1.5 million homes built over the next 10 years. At the same time, we've also received communication from AMO, and they have recognized that this bill has been released quickly, and they are addressing it and reviewing it, as are we. But like AMO, we're encouraged to see the province focus on increasing supply, including building more affordable and purpose-built rental housing. Interestingly, there are implications to local planning decisions that limit public consultation and appeals through this plan. For example, just one small example, the province is proposing to streamline municipal planning responsibilities by removing the planning policy and approval responsibilities from certain upper-tier municipalities known as regions. So that's the region of Durham, Halton, Niagara, Peale, Simcoe, Waterloo, and York. And these changes could potentially be applied to additional upper-tier municipalities in the future via regulation. And this is a quote from the actual bill that's being circulated. There's also an impact that you should be aware of about municipal development charges, parkland dedication levies, and community benefit charges, which many of your municipalities have in place. And we're not sure the impact or financial burden of these growth-related infrastructure, how that's going to be addressed by this new bill. However, the county continues to act for and worked with your municipalities in the senior planning role, and we're actually, we're very happy to do so. So we're right now reviewing the impact of this bill and what it means to our future relationships with the municipalities and your capacity, your staffing capacity, while also reviewing our future staffing capacity requirements moving forward. So the timing of these changes is, it's an interesting bill. There's a lot to it. If you read through the many pieces, they're enacting proposed changes to several acts, from the Planning Act all the way down to some of the growth plans. But it's unfortunate for this term of council. The proposal changes, the proposal for changes to the Planning Act have a commenting period from October 25th to November 24th. As you know, we're only in place until November 23rd, and then a new council takes the seats. And it just doesn't give this committee and this council an opportunity for reviewing of this new bill and what this means. So what I'm endeavoring to do is ask staff, our planning staff and our county staff, reviewing the various proposals and bringing a report to perhaps the inaugural meeting. We have quickly suggested, if required, we still may be asked to call a special meeting of council together if we find it necessary. We're not sure yet. Again, this was launched about three o'clock yesterday, and we're still reviewing it, as are our colleagues across the province. So I just wanted to bring this, make sure that you and your councils were aware of this new bill that's being released and for you to take a read of it when you have an opportunity. Thank you, Warden. And that concludes correspondence.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. Does anyone have any questions at this point in time? If not, again, I know Mr. Kelly and Mr. Davis are on this right away. So, you know, like anything else, this term of council, you know, this is supposed to be our last meeting. Don't bet on it. All right, committee reports. I'll turn it over to Chair Sweet, please, sir.
Excuse me, thank you, Warden. Members of County Council, we here Development and Property Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. The first few items are information items. Force department restructuring. As a result of recent staff changes within the DMP, department current vacancies and service delivery recommendations. And as part of the budget deliberation, staff will be completing departmental review with a focus on forestry GIS division. The proposed review would ensure an acceptable span of control and that the key forestry GIS and trail deliverables are achieved or enhanced. That's part of the Strategy Corporation Initiative that has been brought forward in 2020. Item number two is the Taste of the Valley Holiday Edition. It's hard to imagine, but this is a Christmas edition, I believe, is what they're trying to put in place as part of the Taste of the Valley Holiday Edition. And it's being planned in partnership with the Township of Laurentian Valley on November the 26th at Shady Nook. Vendor registration and more information is available, you see there with the email address that's there. County of Renfrew, D at Queen Spark, Strategy Goal Number One. I think the Warden sort of captured that somewhat. But when we get to that, if there's additional, excuse me, information, perhaps Jason could fill in any details that he has available at that time. Ottawa Valley and Canadian canoe route features. You see the Ottawa Valley is featured again. The Great Taste of Ontario is a great part of the province to visit. And you see it was released in the Globe and Mail, Delicious Autumn through regions to visit for fun. One here was in the Whitewater area, Whitewater Brewing, Whitewater Inn, pardon me, the Whitewater Brewing, Whitewater Rafting, Burnstown, and so forth. You can see where they were going. And I would be remiss if I did not mention Beaver Tales. That'll keep my friend Janice happy as well. Also, you see there the Canadian canoe route must do in Canada as well. Black Ash Recovery, item number five. The strategy was prepared by a consultant and is a piece of advice to the government, which is not binding at this time. However, the strategy is being shared to allow for public input that could inform the government's development of its response. Item number six, the Elgonquin Trail Overlap Agreement. As you know, we've been working with Garrison Peraoua through the base, some 16 kilometers through the base. And we are planning and hopefully getting it to the point where we can now move through the garrison in an overlapping situation. It was agreed originally on five meters setback from the pipeline. This was reviewed by our staff and found it to be perhaps not advantageous to us. And so this was extended to 13 meters west of the pipeline. Our staff has been looking at that. A legal counsel has been engaged and looking forward to moving this forward so that we can continue the development of that trail through the garrison. Item number seven, lease terminations. Unfortunately, you see the information there with the Renfrew County District Health Unit and the Community Futures Corporation, their intentions to vacate the premises at 450 O'Brien Road. By way of information, there's the planning file status. They're reporting to councils a number of factors. The planning division has had black logs of severance and general inquiries with an approximately four- to five-month delay. You'll notice there that it's now down to 30 days from the four- to five-month delay and has been reduced to 60 days. So this is excellent, once again. And they have to be congratulated for moving these files ahead. So job well done. There also, we've reported, I believe, that we have lost a junior planner to another municipality. So we're currently in the process of hiring that individual. Item number nine is a resolution. The Resolution Number DPCC 221092, moved by the Chair, seconded by a committee. The County Council recommends that the Warden send a letter to the federal government reminding them of the county's role in the previous request for expressions of interest to manage and operate Canadian nuclear laboratories to ensure the needs of the residents of the County of Renfrew continue to be met. Just for those who were here at the time, or just a reminder that we had intervenor status with that initiative. And it has worked very well for community involvement with CNL. And we certainly will want to be part of that initiative going forward when the expression of interest comes up. You can see all the information on that on page nine. Item number 10, again, is Resolution Number DPCC 2210-94. It's moved by the Chair and seconded by a committee. The County Council approves the trail pass requirement for all terrain vehicles, ATVs, on the Elgonquin and KMP recreational trails starting in the 2023 season. And further, that staff be directed to modify the existing lease agreement with the Renfrew County ATV Club to reflect the trail pass requirements. And further, that the KMP Recreation Management Advisory Committee be informed of this direction. You can see the background, and we were given the direction to go back and renegotiate this in terms of the amount of revenue that we would be receiving. The $2,000 financial contribution has been renegotiated, 3% of revenue that was received, which was greater. All that information you can find on page 11 as well. Item number 11 is another resolution, DPCC 221095, moved by Chair, seconded by a committee. That County Council approves a delegation request at the 2023 Rural Ontario Municipal Association, the Roma Annual Conference, with the Minister of Agriculture and Food and Rural Affairs to discuss the Line Fences Act as it relates to the cost of municipal ownership of the abandoned rail corridors. You see the background there. Really, basically, we're asking for an opportunity to meet with the minister to see if there's any dollars assisting as with the line fences along the abandoned rail corridor. We understand the process that's in place with regards to the abandoned line. We're simply wanting an opportunity to talk to the minister to see if there's any way that we can find some funding to assist with this particular process. Resolution Number DPCC 221097, moved by Chair, seconded by a committee. The County Council makes a formal request to the City of Pembroke that all municipal fees and charges as they relate to the building of integrated community housing units at Lee and Douglas Street be waived. You see the background to that, that we're trying to make this as affordable as possible. But this will change as a result of the letter that Craig just read as well. So we're not sure how that all goes. But nonetheless, that request is going forward. Item number 13, Consent Application Reimbursement Request, Resolution Number DPCC 2210100, moved by Chair, seconded by the committee. That County Council declines Mr. Villeneuve's request for reimbursement of costs related to the severance process. And you can see the background on that particular request as well. So it's there, the resolution is to deny that request. Bylaws, number 14, Resolution Number DPCC 221093, moved by Chair, seconded by a committee. The County Council passed a bylaw to enter into a contribution agreement for the rural economic development, the RED funding program for which Economic Development Division has been approved to assist with newcomer and workforce attraction and development initiatives. And you see in the background the amount of money that has been funded to us, up to 65% of that particular program as well. So job well done for applying for that. Item number 15, snowmobile lease agreement, West Carlton Snowmobile Trails, Resolution Number DPCC 221096, moved by Chair, seconded by a committee. That County Council adopts a bylaw to enter a lease agreement with the West Carlton Snowmobile Trails Association of the Federation, Ontario Federation of Snowmobile Clubs. And further, that this lease agreement be for a period of five years, commencing on December the 1st, 2022, and expiring on April the 30th, 2027. So that you can see there where this is approximately one kilometer in land from Madawaska River to the city of Ottawa border. Item number six, request for proposal, Resolution Number DPCC 221019, moved by the Chair, seconded by a committee. The County Council approves the proposal submitted by Glacier Maintenance Incorporated, Bell Volontaria for the provision of janitorial services for county administration buildings at 7 and 9 International Drive, Pembroke, Ontario, on the amount of $267,300 plus HSD for the three-year period effective November the 1st, 2022, to October the 31st, 2025. And further, that a bylaw be passed to enter into an agreement. And further, that bylaw 10718 is hereby repealed. You see all the background and all of those who bid on this on page 16. Item number 17, request for proposal, DP, pardon me, Resolution Number DPCC 221099, moved by Chair, seconded by a committee. That County Council approves the proposal submitted by Light Hiscow, Snowplowing, Renfrew, Ontario for the provision of snow removal services at 410 and 450 O'Brien Road for the tune of $183,000 plus HSD for the period of three years, starting November the 1st, 2022, to October the 31st, 2025. And further, that County Council... And further, that county council pass a bylaw to enter into this agreement. And you can see there the background on that, that particular resolution. Item number 18 is the official plan amendment, number 36, resolution number DPCC 2210101, moved by chair, seconded by committee. That county council pass a bylaw to adopt and approve amendment number 36 to the official plan of the county of Renfrew. And you see the background there. This is, is a request to extend and amend the settlement area designation for the village of Braceside, that leave all the public meetings, et cetera, have been held with regards to this. All of which is submitted by myself as chair, committee members, Emon, Keller, Lynch, Rieger, Reinwald, Robinson and TJ.
Thank you very much, Chair Sweet. So we'll start at the beginning of your report under information. Item number one, the proposed department restructuring. Any questions, comments? Seeing none. Number two, Taste of the Valley Holiday Edition at Laurentian Valley. Please mark your calendars for November the 26th. I'm looking forward to seeing everyone there. Number three, County of Renfrew Day at Queen's Park. I know that Rose has reached out to those who may be in attendance. I don't know if everyone has confirmed yet, Rose, but if they haven't, I'm hoping they will. I think it's going to be a fantastic day, and it's, it's an opportunity for us to really show what we have in the county of Renfrew. Number four, Ottawa Valley, Canada canoe route feature. Five, the Black Ash Recovery Strategy. Six, the Algonquin Trail, the overlap agreement amendment. Number seven, lease terminations, Renfrew County Place. Counselor Donahue, please, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. Through you, perhaps to Mr. Davis, or to, to Mr. Kelly, whoever appropriate, I'm just wondering if, given that there are two tenants with the intention of vacating the premises, has there been a record of any conversations of dissatisfaction with the, the tenancy of either of these tenants? Is there an intention of doing, you know, what I would refer to perhaps as, say, the exit interview, i.e., are, does the county of Renfrew continue to have competitive market rates, lease rates for space in the town of Renfrew? The fact that there are two tenants exiting the premises is suggesting to me that this, this would be valuable to understand what the nature behind the intent to vacate might be, and if there are anything, any changes that we should be considering, or in fact, if it is, has nothing to do with the above. But I think it would be worth having that information at our disposal so as to ensure that we remain competitive in leasing space at Renfrew County Place.
All right. Thank you very much for the question, Counselor Donahue. And certainly, we have met with the CFDC, so I, I know that staff are aware of the, the challenges that that organization is facing. I'll turn it over to Mr. Davis, please.
Thank you, Warden. So we did, CEO Craig Kelly did reach out to the health unit when we did receive notice, and we've yet to receive a correspondence back to the reasoning why we have them leaving us at 450 O'Brien. And with CFDC, it's more of a matter of they're looking at their own organizations and how they're going to provide their services and maybe looking to downsides in that area. So right now, no direct correspondence to the reasoning why, but we will review our competitive pricing in that location when we reissue to let people know we have space available. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Any further, Counselor Donahue? No. So certainly, you know, the lease, lease termination is one issue, but again, we discussed it at DNP and again, Health Committee around the services that are provided in, in that office by the Renfrew County District Health Unit. And I'm just going to put our representatives on the Board of Health on the spot here. I know you had a board meeting yesterday. Is there, can you share, is there any light you can share at this point in time?
No, there was no, no discussion. The Health Unit Board meetings moved rather swiftly, and I was late getting on, and the minutes had been approved by the time I got on, so wasn't able to ask any questions about it. But I understand there was a, an email sent from a member of the management team to one of our local municipalities suggesting that there was a plan to try and find an alternative site in the Renfrew area. So I'm not sure what, what is going on, but we'll be asking that question at the next board meeting. That has been a concern, is that there didn't seem to be a plan going forward. It sounds like there's one being grown in the background, so we'll wait to see what the results of that are. But at this point, I have nothing definitive that I can offer.
Thank you very much. And it is not my intent to put myself and, or insert myself into the business of the Health Unit. However, it's the services that we need to have information on, whether, you know, what their issue is around rent. That's one thing that we can take care of, but it's the services people are concerned about. Counselor Donahue, please, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden. Just to fill in the gaps, in contrast to my colleague, Counselor Emon, I am always in a timely fashion prepared for the meeting when it commences. So any of the gap that, that Counselor Emon may not have been aware of at this, or, or as is his wont, several of the other meetings as well. There was no discussion. What I will say, coming forward through the Health Committee, Madam Chair, there was some extensive discussion of this at the Health Committee. There is, there was a recommendation for a letter over the warden's signature. I will also acknowledge that in the, the, let us refer to it as the southern portion, perhaps, of the county, those, those municipalities surrounding the town of Renfrew and Renfrew County Place and this location for the public health unit, we likewise did, at our council meeting just last Thursday, authorize a correspondence over my signature, just to ensure that the level of service would continue to be there, that we have come to, to expect in that part of the, the county of Renfrew and the area served in the Renfrew County and a district health unit. As to, as to, that just happened Thursday. That correspondence was signed on Friday, so I don't have a response from that. Perhaps if something more fulsome may come actually from the correspondence. Hopefully, that council sees fit when we get to the health report.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Is there any other further comments on item number seven? Seeing none. Item number eight, the planning file status. Nine, under resolutions, ACL's issue of request of expressions of interest. Ten, the ATV trail passes for the trails in the county of Renfrew. Eleven, the Roma Conference delegation requests. Oh, Counselor Reinwald, please, sir.
Thank you very much, Warden. Let's go back to item 10, if you don't mind, please, the all-terrain vehicle pass. There's going to be, I know in the portion, actually, I'm one step ahead of myself. There's, there's another item further down the line with regards to the ATV, if I'm not mistaken.
Take your time to find it, because I believe number 10, it's number of pages, if your question should be in there somewhere. It's probably all under 10, though.
Okay. So do you want me to continue then?
Yes, please, sir.
There was a section with regards to the, the trail being, you know, from, from the Algonquin Trail to the town of Deep River, which I totally support. I just want to make sure that the trail is going to be crossing some landowners' property. It'll probably be crossing some of the, or be using part and partial, portion of the snowmobile trails and Laurentian, access through Laurentian Hills. I just want to ensure that there's some cooperation and coordination between those parties, the ATV, the snowmobile and Laurentian Hills, in order to get these vehicles to, you know, to the town of Deep River. I think it's a very, very good idea. I just hope that there's, there's a lot of support between, between those groups. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Reinwald. Mr. Davis, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Warden, and through you. So we, we always encourage the two groups to work together, the snowmobile club and the ATV club. And we do know they're organized enough that they do work together to have that direct access to the town of Deep River through the village of Chalk River. We can assist where we can and when we can as an organization. We deal with our Algonquin Trail in that area, but as a greater organization, we do provide assistance. So I'll leave that for now and encourage them to keep the, the communication open with the two clubs. Thank you.
Supplementary, Counselor Reinwald.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Because there, there is also some, you know, some private land, and there's some, depending on which way that the trail is going to follow, because it's probably close to, what, five kilometers from the Algonquin Trail to the town of Deep River. So it will be crossing, you know, several boundaries. I just want to, you know, give caution to the wind that, you know, it's going to require some cooperation, coordination between the landowners, the ATV clubs, the snowmobile clubs and, and the Laurentian Hills. That's, that's because right now, the snowmobile clubs are, there is a thing in place, and they travel right through to the town of Deep River. And it's, you know, it's, it's a great, great asset for, for all of us to have them there. And I just hope that the overall coordination takes place with the ATV club. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Reinwald. And I'm sure staff appreciates the heads up and are aware of what's happening. Are there any other comments on item number 10? Counselor Doncaster, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'm not sure I should let my neighbor speak, speak about Deep River without chiming in a little bit. So I just wanted to bring county council or staff aware of the fact that the town of Deep River has been working with the ATV club and the snowmobile club. Because currently, we don't allow snowmobiles or ATVs on our streets, but we're looking at some options available for that. So important, if, if we ever get there, and I'm not presuming what Deep River Council will do, the idea is to allow ATVs and, and snowmobiles to get to our downtown. But if they can't get from the Algonquin Trail to the town, then it really doesn't matter. So it is important for economic development purposes, and our hotels have asked us for this. And, you know, we're, we're certainly getting a lot of consultation from residents about issues with ATVs and, and snowmobiles on streets, but I think we're looking at this rather, rather hard, but it's, it's mostly to access our business section downtown. So thank you.
Absolutely. And I know there's a big revitalization plan for downtown and Deep River, so you definitely want to have as many people down there as possible. All right. Item number 11, then, the Roma delegation requests. Item 12, the integrated community housing. I'm sure the city of Pembroke will say yes. Number 13, the consent application reimbursement request. Counselor Gills, please, ma'am.
I would request that we could separate this from the report and speak about it later.
So you're moving request to sever?
Yes, please.
Do you have a second or? Counselor TJ. All in favor? Carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under bylaws, number 14, newcomer workforce attraction and development initiative. Counselor Burrows, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I think this is a really great idea, and I'm glad that the county's taking the lead on this. I guess the one question I would have, or maybe suggestion, is that we certainly do need new newcomers and workers to fill some of the vacant positions throughout Renfrew County. I'm wondering if in, in this market research and policy that will be developed, if there'll be identification of available affordable housing, or even just housing stock as part of this report? Because I understand it is one of the challenges. I know, I know in our municipality, it's not just attracting the workers, it's them being able to find a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Burrows. Mr. Davis, would you like to comment?
Thank you, Warden, and through you. So we will review that to see if that is included in the application, and if not, we'll see the, the applicability of that, that request through this application. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. Are there any further comments on item number 14? Fifteen, the snowmobile lease agreement. Sixteen, the request for proposal for janitorial services in this building. Seventeen, snow removal at 410 and 450 O'Brien. Counselor Burrows, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to Mr. Perkins. I'm just curious if one of the reasons, I, I know certainly the insurance is a big driving factor in the cost, but these contracts for snow removal, do they also include having to remove snow from walkways and stairs? Because I know that can certainly add significant cost if, if the contractor has to get out of the vehicle to do any hand shoveling. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Burrows. Mr. Davis, please.
Thank you, Warden. So in this contract, it's dealing just with the parking lot area. So, and the biggest cost, and it is an increase from previous years in this current year, is that the insurance and the fuel rates is the biggest driver for the increase. It's not just this one spot. It's throughout all our different places we have snow removal contracts. So I don't think this will ever go down. Specifically, again, I want to repeat, is the insurance costs that are going up exponentially on these contractors. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. Any other further questions on 17? On 18, official plan amendment number 36. Counselor Donahue, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Start off with a question, this is on page 18 of PDF, and it's the third paragraph of the background last sentence, wherein it cites, "No objections or concerns to the proposed amendment have been received by the county," but there does appear to be, at the tail end of the report, correspondence was received expressing objection to the, to the proposed amendment and the development. I think I'm not going to go there right now. I think that there was one question, but I think there were two individuals had expressed concern with the development of this property. So I'm just trying to understand what I would certainly view as correspondence opposing or concerned that this sentence says none were received.
Mr. Davis, please.
Thank you, Warden. So at the time of the creation of this report, there was none at the time. During the Development and Property Committee meeting, again, there was none written at the time, but it is very clearly stated by the, the manager of Planning Services, Bruce Howarth, that all correspondence would be brought to county council, which it is as a part of the package for your review and consideration. So the terminology and the wording may be a bit awkward, but the intent was still there to have the correspondence brought to this county council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Counselor Donahue, supplementary, please.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, to, to Mr. Davis. It does explain it, and it is somewhat anachronistic, I understand, because of the, the process and the intent to, to make sure that any correspondence received did come, but it is inconsistent. The language in number 18 is now null and void essentially, when it says there were none. Just very briefly on this, so when one goes to the map, particularly on several pages, but on page 82 of the report, council will note that there is zoning mapping that shows the, the village community, I think, is the zoning designation that is illustrated in pink. And you will see to the south and to the north, there are, they are clearly identified as pink. There are two lots in between that are white, that are rural. And I'm only bringing this forward because I think we, I may engage certainly, whether the balance of council wishes to on the item that was severed. We see plainly in front of us the dichotomy of planning, when we have people here that are concerned and wish there to be no development here, versus the severed item, which is expressing concern that it's so hard to get development. And I think that this does underscore the challenge that is inherent in planning. With respect to this one, though, on any of the concerns that were raised, I don't find them so far persuasive in that there are simply these two lots. There is also an aggregate resource directly across the road. There was also a waste site directly across the road. I don't see anything in this report to persuade me that there is any more potential threat to Dockert Creek than that that exists within the developments that are already in place. I cannot conceive that that would be so. So I think that, that I wanted to raise this simply to underscore how polar opposite we have in just one development and property report. in just one development and property report coming to council today, but also to look plainly at each one of them and discuss and decide on the individual merits thereof. So I am certainly in support of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Counselor Donahue. Are there any other comments on item number 18? The report as a whole, with the exception of item 13. Seeing none, do I have a mover?
So moved, Warden.
Thank you. All in favor of the report, with the exception of 13? Thank you. Before we go on to item number 13, I have received a request to take a break, so we will break until 11:15.
Please be seated. Saw lots of great chatter during that 15-minute break, so I think that's great. We have to do that, it's our last time together. So we'll go back to item number 13. Counselor Grills, please.
Thank you, Warden. I'd just like to make a few comments. First, I'd like to thank Counselor Donahue for the good points you've already made about planning. I just want to speak to this particular issue and ask for a recorded vote if I could. We've learned nothing during the last few months as we approach this week's municipal election. We sure have learned that we are in the people business. Every decision that we make affects people, no matter which committee we're sitting on. Decisions on developing property and creating new homes are crucial in the smallest of municipalities like mine and in the largest as well. And they bring a lot of questions to council. Many of the planning issues have come to candidates as they went door-to-door and throughout the election process. During the process, I spoke to one family who were able, with, for example, the secondary dwelling allowance now, that they can have a secondary dwelling for an elderly father. But I was also told if they couldn't have gotten that, they would have done it anyway. But at any rate, to speak to this particular issue, I just want to reiterate my thanks to staff, as has been pointed out, that any kind of interaction that Mr. Villeneuve had with the development and property group, that it was always professional and polite. Decisions that have been made at the department are obviously those of process, but it's Mr. Villeneuve's feeling that he needs to question the process as he feels that the process is flawed. I'd like to point out about his particular situation that the engineering report that has caused concern regarding an aggregate resource on the road that his severance is on, and he had to pay for the study to confirm a plan. Right now, there are six vacant properties in the same vicinity, directly from the left of his property, across the road from his property, four other vacant lots fronting the same road, where in the same situation, all they would require is a building permit. That's one of the things that he has spoken to me about. And he also has asked for $500 back from his lawyer's fees because he was advised by our clerk, that she received this particular information as well, I gather, from the county. And the advice received was that he had to have his consent agreement prepared by a lawyer. However, I am being told that that's not so much true, that he could have prepared a consent agreement and all the lawyer had to do was register it. I don't know if this is in fact, but I'm just passing on what Mr. Villeneuve has shared with me throughout these two years. I will be supporting the return, the reimbursement at this request. If there's any questions from others, I'd try to answer what I can, but I will be supporting Mr. Villeneuve's request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Grills. Are there any comments? Counselor TJ, please, ma'am.
So just a process question. So then are you making a motion, Counselor Riguerre, that you're going to support his request? Because right now, oh, okay, you've done that already? Yeah, thank you, sorry.
No, so what it is right now, the resolution is that Mr. Villeneuve's request be denied. We will take a recorded vote on that.
And then someone's going to make a motion, or what?
Well, I'm assuming if we're not denying it, then it automatically is we will be reimbursing him.
Okay, of course, yes.
Mr. Kelly, is that correct or not? We will need a new motion?
To you, Warden, and to council, I would recommend a new motion. This is not a reimbursement of our fees. This is reimbursement of fees outside of the County Councils. It's actually a payment to a public member that we would, in my estimation, we need a motion to pay somebody for fees that they incurred in the private sector, if you will. It's not a waiving of our fees or otherwise. It's payment back to the fees that they incurred to develop a property.
Thank you very much for that explanation, and we will do that should this motion be defeated. Are there any other comments? Counselor Reinwald, please, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Is this normal protocol? Has this happened in the past within the county or with the reimbursement? I'm not sure, I don't know.
Mr. Kelly, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to Counselor Reinwald. In my recent memory, I don't recall this, there have been requests for waiving of fees, mostly denied, but it would go back years if at all. But again, not in my recent half dozen years or so that I can recall, and certainly not a reimbursement of development fees. We may have heard the concerns before, but we haven't been asked for reimbursement.
But again, so that we're clear, these fees that Mr. Villeneuve is asking us to reimburse him for were not fees paid to the County of Renfrew. Is that correct, Mr. Kelly?
That is correct.
Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Warden, and I thank actually Counselor Reinwald for opening this door, for the opening remarks. So if I understand, and I believe that I do, Mr. Kelly correctly, no, it has not been the normal protocol. But what I will advise council, that if we approve this reimbursement, it's about to. Because you don't start down this road and not have a lot of individuals that have found planning processes frustrating, that will be knocking on the door and sending correspondence. It would be memorable to remember Mr. Villeneuve's name should council wish to reimburse this because we could refer to this as the Villeneuve adjustment moving forward. And years from now, we could refer to, oh, that was way back in 2022, when the council decided that that was a good idea. Having said those things, I am very sympathetic to Mr. Villeneuve, as I understand also, I believe Mr. Villeneuve was a member of the Head Clare and Mariah Council right up until, well, he still is, does remain, a member of council until such time as their inaugural meeting. So I commend Mr. Villeneuve for his, you know, working towards the development of their community and the building up of their community, et cetera. I myself, and it has nothing to do with the position that I occupy that finds me sitting in this chair, it is through having property. It is through having gone through these processes numerous times. It is a challenge. They are not, I will bring to council's attention, there is a line within the correspondence where Mr. Villeneuve suggests he wanted to do something simple, which was to gift his three sons' property. Certainly need to acknowledge the incredible generosity of Mr. Villeneuve, and I agree with him that gifting is simple. Creating the gift is complicated. When the gift does not exist, it is terribly complicated. At the core of this particular initiative, council is well aware of the longstanding policy vis-à-vis three plus two for consent applications. The report clearly identifies that this will now be the eighth. I'm prepared to accept that probably most, if not all, of those prior consents were prior to Mr. Villeneuve actually taking title to this property. Whether they were or not is not necessarily relevant, but we have significantly exceeded that three plus two, or five consent policy. That is ultimately what drove the requirement for the justification report. That justification report is part of our official plan now and is going to continue. What I will also say is that there was a, and I understand the confusion because these things don't all happen at once. So Mr. Villeneuve expresses certainly some significant irritation, annoyance, frustration, whatever you wish to call it, with respect to the divergence of the zoning bylaw in Head Clare and Mariah that requires half an acre, and the new official plan, OPA 31, that that requires a much larger land holding or footprint. Of course, as everyone in this room knows, because we are exposed to it on a regular basis, the official plan has standing and it takes some time for the enacting, if you will, through the zoning bylaw amendments to make them consistent. So I certainly understand that frustration. Ultimately, it's unclear, based on Counselor Grills' comments, whether there was a requirement for an outside agency to create the consent agreement or not in the end. Mr. Villeneuve did in fact get the two that he acceded to. His intent was three, he got the two. But I will also note as a final comment, as with any deal, whether it is with the County of Renfrew, whether it is with respect to my farming business, if Mr. Villeneuve had this intent, then it should have been made known before he undertook any of these things. I will only undertake these things if there is a reasonable expectation of seeking reimbursement. This is, the legal community would refer to this as ex post facto. It is after the fact now, after these sums have been expended, to now approach seeking recompense. I would not have supported it were it to have come before this, but I think at least I would have given it more consideration and that Mr. Villeneuve could then have made it informed a decision whether he wished to carry forward. What I would suggest, being somewhat knowledgeable about property in the County of Renfrew, though I will express that I do not have a great feel for Head Clare and Mariah, but I suspect that the value that is created in achieving these two brand-new lots substantially exceeds the $14,000 to $15,000 that was expended. I will acknowledge also that a lot of record, as Counselor Grills has made reference to, almost universally, though not universally, almost universally, if you have a lot of record, that you're going to have enough room to set back your septic, your well, et cetera, you can build. That is the difference, is development in this regard is the creation of new properties. It is not the building thereon. So I understand the frustration that Mr. Villeneuve has experienced. It is a somewhat complicated process, but it is, perhaps it is not common sense, but a great deal of consideration has gone in. These are not frivolous decisions that have led to the creation of the official plan and ultimately the zoning bylaw amendments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Donahue. Are there any further comments on item number 13? Counselor Riguerre, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just a comment, I think that we will be looking at this as precedent-setting, and I will not be in favor of supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Lynch, please.
Thank you, Warden, to the Director of Development and Property. Mr. Villeneuve was told prior to, that all these things would have to take place prior to this development being taken place?
Mr. Davis, please.
Thank you, Warden, through you. So yes, all these information, and you see it's part of your committee package also in the attachment, so all this was taken place during the severance application process. So it's not all of a sudden, it's just part of the process. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Are there any other further questions or comments on item number 13? Seeing none, Mr. Kelly, recorded vote, please, sir.
Thank you, Warden. Just double-check, my colleague is...
All right, Counselor Grills.
I just wanted to mention that this is your first recorded vote?
Yeah. Well... (laughing). It's a series of firsts this month. Oh, there you go. Thank you very much. So just to be clear, Warden and council, we are voting on the resolution, as you see here, the County Council declines Mr. Villeneuve's request for reimbursement of costs related to the severance process?
Yes.
All right, just to be clear. Thank you. I'll start with Counselor Grills. How would you vote?
No.
I think we need to clarify this one a bit. Okay, just wanted to double-check. Sorry, Counselor Bennett?
In favor.
Counselor Bros?
In favor.
Counselor Doncaster?
In favor.
Counselor Donahue?
In favor.
Counselor Imo?
In favor.
Counselor Hunt?
In favor.
Counselor Keller?
In favor.
Counselor Love? Not here. Counselor Lynch?
In favor.
Counselor Murphy?
Counselor Murphy, you have your mic turned off. Okay, you're on now.
Favor.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Counselor Peck?
Favor.
Counselor Riguerre?
In favor.
Counselor Reinwald?
In favor.
Counselor Warden Robinson?
In favor.
Counselor Sweet?
In favor.
Counselor TJ?
In favor.
Warden, the motion passes.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. So I will now call on Counselor Donahue, Chair of the Health Committee, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden. To the council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Health Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number one is the COVID-19 pandemic update. As in Health Committee, this is somewhat extensive, I will address each of the bullet points. Item 1A is home outbreak status. Item B, New Public Health Ontario Report on Respiratory Virus Overview. C would be bivalent booster update. D, COVID-19 Prevention and Containment Funding Update. E, IPAC Training and Education Funding. F, if you're still following along, we are at F, Bill 7, Implementation to Support Ontario's Plan to Stay Open: The Health System Stability and Recovery. Item 2, Madam Chair, is Ministry of Long-Term Care Inspection Report undertaken at Miramichi Lodge. Item 3 is Ministry of Long-Term Care Announcement of New Nurse Practitioner Funding. Item 4 is the County of Renfrew Community Paramedicine Report vis-à-vis the presentation by Commander Halting to the German Rescue Service Symposium. Item 5 is the Virtual Triage Assessment Center, or VTAC, and the Community Impact Award. I was very pleased, along with Deputy Chief Grenier and CAO Craig Kelly, and honored to have received the Upper Ottawa Valley Chamber Award, recognizing the acknowledgement of RC VTAC and what it has meant to our community, and certainly must acknowledge all of the shoulders that the three of us that were present that evening to receive the award were standing on, and the enormous effort that it has taken to put this together. It has marshaled the resources right across the County of Renfrew and across almost every health sector and even outside of the health sector. So very pleased to have been there to receive this on behalf of all of those that have worked so hard to put this program together. Item 6 are the exemplary service awards, as we had done with the, at the introduction of our council meeting today, certainly recognizing this, as the chief had noted, this is not with respect to just having been participants. This is an outstanding recognition of the value of paramedics Farrell and Slobosian, what they have brought to our community and the health and well-being of members of our community, and once again, they're to be commended for their outstanding efforts. Moving on then, Madam Chair, to resolutions. Item number seven, the business case for Bonnisher Manor Full-Time Registered Nurse. Resolution number H-CC-22-10-89, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council approve that the full-time registered nurse complement at Bonnisher Manor be increased by one position of 1,950 hours from existing part-time hours, effective November 6, 2022, in an effort to facilitate recruitment and attention, and, Madam Chair, the background is attached. Item number eight is long-term care homes policies and procedures with respect to vaccination policy, consistent with Strategic Plan Goal Number Three. Resolution number H-CC-22-10-90, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that County Council approve that policy G-010, vaccination policy for the long-term care homes, remain applicable until March 1, 2023. Once again, Madam Warden, the background is attached. Item nine is Roma delegation request, resolution number H-CC-22-10-92, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council approve the submission of a delegation request for the Roma Conference with the Minister of Health, for the Renfrew County Virtual Triage and Assessment Center, and yet again, the background is attached. Item 10 is with respect to the health unit lease at Renfrew County Place, as I had alluded to earlier, resolution number H-CC-22-10-95, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council approve that the warden write a letter to the health unit to determine if and how the decision to not renew the lease at Renfrew County Place will affect the health unit services in the County of Renfrew. Moving on then to bylaws. Madam Warden, item number 11, Educational Affiliation Agreement between the County of Renfrew Paramedic Service and the Justice Institute of British Columbia. Resolution number H-CC-22-10-93, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that County Council adopt a bylaw authorizing the warden and CAO clerk to sign the educational affiliation agreement between the County of Renfrew Paramedic Service and the Justice Institute of British Columbia for preceptorship write-outs for Canadian military search and rescue technicians with County of Renfrew Sierra/CPRU paramedics, and again, Madam Chair, the background is attached. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair, along with committee members Bennett, Doncaster, Imo, Grills, Love, Murphy, and Warden Robinson.
Thank you very much, Chair Donahue. We'll start at the beginning of your report under information. Item number one, the COVID-19 pandemic update in long-term care. Any of the bullet points anyone wants to speak on? Seeing none. Item number two, Ministry of Long-Term Care and the Inspection Report for Miramichi Lodge. Number three, the Ministry of Long-Term Care Announcement for New Nurse Practitioner Funding. Unfortunately, I don't think the funding comes with bodies, but funding nonetheless. Number four, County of Renfrew Community Paramedics. Number five, the Virtual Triage Assessment Center, the Community Impact Award. Number six, exemplary service awards, which we have the opportunity this morning to congratulate both recipients. Under seven, the business case, Bonnisher Manor Full-Time Registered Nurse. Counselor Bros, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and I think this is a great initiative, moving from part-time to full-time position. I mean, not only does it make sense from a business case, it certainly makes sense from a health and safety perspective as well, where we experienced during COVID the challenge of keeping residents in our long-term care facilities safe and avoiding some of the outbreaks. And we had to restrict the practice of part-time nurses moving from one facility to the next. So I think this addresses both the situation from a business case as well as health and safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Counselor Bros. Are there any further comments? Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and through you to Counselor Bros. Thank you for bringing that forward. I think it underscores, this has been in place for quite some time, but I think what is safe to say, we have been discussing, typically it has been with respect to PSWs, but we have been discussing in this room, health human resources, almost the full length of time that I've been here, and that's nearing eight years. I think what we are seeing is the challenge in staffing these. Madam Warden, you had yourself identified with respect to the funding for nurse practitioners. It is enormously welcome to have funding. The challenge is to find, to scour the earth to find those nurse practitioners that are going to be able to fill these roles. It is a clear challenge right across this country, the health human resource issue and continuing to staff. There is not a day goes by where we are not exposed to various services that we have come to rely on have to close, perhaps overnight, perhaps for a more lengthy period. So this is certainly in keeping with that, and yes, in terms of how things are going to be addressed moving forward, Counselor Bros is correct, this is the new world that we inhabit right now.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir. Any other further comments on item number seven? Seeing none. Item number eight, long-term care vaccination policy. Number nine, the Roma delegation requests. Ten, the health unit lease at Renfrew County Place. I think we've beat that one to death. And under bylaws, number 11, the agreement between the County of Renfrew Paramedic Service and the Justice Institute of British Columbia. The report as a whole, do I have a mover?
Madam Warden, I'm very pleased, as my final motion, to move the acceptance of the Health Committee report.
Thank you. All in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Now, we are going to go back because, again, this is my last meeting, and so I'm deviating apparently from the agenda, not intentionally, right now, anyway. So I did miss the Ontario Winter Games, but I did want to acknowledge, and we just lost a gentleman, there was a crowd here this morning with a number of our staff here to witness some of the exemplary service awards. But in the audience, I do want to recognize Mayor-elect Valerie Yon for Brunel and Duck Riedler. Welcome. I'm sure you'll enjoy your next four years sitting around this table. And again, the mayor-elect from Whitewater Region, Neil Nicholson, who escaped, so when he comes back, we'll just all stare at him to make sure. And of course, a very relaxed-looking gentleman in a blue shirt in the back, former CAO Paul Morrow. Welcome, Paul. So with that, Counselor Imo, please, your Winter Games report.
Thank you very much, Warden, and through you to council and committee, I'd like to report, as you know, the games are February 2 to 5, February 9 to 12, and we've had meetings on September 7, 21, October 5, October 19. Most of them have been hybrid, and will be moving to weekly meetings probably about the middle of November. Sponsorship, we have promises, and we'll be getting some announcements out in the neighborhood of about $150,000 towards our $40,000 goal, or sorry, our $400,000 goal. And so we're in the process of signing... And so, we're in the process of signing contracts. We have about 200 more businesses that we're going to be approaching across the county, and we're getting a really good reception. Cindy and myself met with the Towneshire Bonche Valley for a financial contribution as well as a truck and a driver, and we're going to be visiting the town of Armpire in early December. So, we are asking for the loan of a truck and driver, patio heaters, sandwich boards, and an assortment of smaller items to try and cut down the things that we have to rent. We have a sponsor who is considering providing jackets and tukes for outdoor volunteers, which is another major expense we'll be able to pull out of our budget line if possible. And we have another major sponsor who is looking at supplies for the games headquarters, which, paper printers and some printing. So, we're starting to make some inroads into pulling some of the costs out that are driving, you know, driving us to have some sleepless nights. Media, RCI social media students are going to assist us with our social media sprint right up to and during the games. And we're also, we had a great meeting with Mark Sirson of the separate school board, and there's going to be a really good relationship come with that. MYFM is working on a series of really exciting interviews, as is the EKV leader, so you're going to see those coming out. We'll be doing some profiles on past games participants, and some of them live in the county from the '70s, and so it's going to look pretty sharp. And please remember to like and share our Facebook, our Instagram, and our Twitter, just to build our profile. Our website, it's brand new, it's open, the mobile site is friendly, and it's really sharp, it looks, it's amazing, actually. Opening ceremonies, we're still working out the food and transportation. As you know, we'll, 1,400 students each Thursday on-site, so we have to try and register them, feed them, and transport them. And one of the transportation pieces is the trickiest for us, because if it ends at 8:30 and we're sending them to an hour away, that by the time they get home will be 9:30, 10 o'clock, and then we try and get them into competition for the next morning. So, we are, we have some ideas that we're playing with right now. Finance, the budget is doing okay. Jennifer's mic is off, I hope. Each committee is, we're working on ballpark costs right now. Food is up about 45%, and transportation is right out of the world, and so it's driving some changes on what we're doing. Moving along, we're going to have the ministry folks up for some calls with the PSOs, the provincial sporting organizations, just to make sure we're on target with them. We're doing a readiness training, which is sort of like a disaster in the making, what happens if a bus or a snowstorm, and so we're doing some of that stuff. We've changed a little bit, we're doing breakout groups now, so we had admin and merchandise, where you have five or six people together from different committees and just roll through what they're doing, and it's meant to be a constructive, a constructive exchange of thoughts, so you'll see some things that we've talked about. Questions committee, we're working on questions for our PSOs, logistics, moving stuff around, we have two storage sites, we have cots need to be steam cleaned, we now own 101 cots. We had those donated to us. We have some questions about radios and signage, registration, just kit assembly accreditation, transportation, as I noted at the opening ceremonies. And we are having some conversations with Western Quebec Bus Lines, see if we can get them in here. Medical, you can see the issues that we brought up there. Food services, I'm in charge of waste management all of a sudden, so we'll see what we can do with that. And so, meetings, we did make note to our volunteers, we're a pretty competitive bunch, and ask, you know, we're driven to ask questions, and wanted to make sure that our chairs took that as a constructive process and not a destructive process, so we're tempering some of our points and observations when we're doing these critical reviews. Venues, kickboxing is moving to Valor in Petawawa. And very quickly, our, just our, a note about our merchandise, and then the other information is the same as you've had in the past, and that's what I can submit to you at this point, here, Warden. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Emo. Are there any questions for Councillor Emo? Seeing none, when you started listing all the number of meetings you had, I thought you were trying to outdo me this month.
It's been an interesting month.
All right, well, thank you very much for the report. I'm going to turn it over to Chair of the Operations Committee, Councillor Pickett, please, sir.
Thank you very much, Warden. Members of county council, we, your operations committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information, item number one, monthly project status report attached as appendix one for council. Item two, capital program variance report attaches appendix two for councils. And Mr. Hanrath will provide an overview of the 2022 capital project at the meeting. Is that?
We'll do that when we're running the report.
Okay, thank you.
I see Mr. Hanrath in the back, just a year to go.
Item three, winter operations status. The department is required to be 50% operational by November the 1st and 100% operational by November the 15th. Night patrol shifts scheduled to commence on the November 15th, and will continue until April the 1st, 2023. Keep our fingers crossed that we don't have to call out the equipment very often. Resolutions, number four, Rural Ontario Municipal Association, Roma 2023 Conference. Delegation requests, resolution number OPCC-2210110, moved by chair, seconded by committee. That county council approves a delegation request at the 2023 Rural Ontario Municipal Association Annual Conference with the Minister of Infrastructure to discuss growth-related and shovel-ready construction projects. A little bit of background for you there. Under bylaws, policy for decorative crosswalks, resolution number OPCC-2210113, moved by chair, seconded by committee. That county council passed a bylaw approving corporate policy, PW-18, decorative crosswalks on county roads, which outlines the procedure for the request and approval of the installation of decorative crosswalks. There's some background there for you, but all requests for decorative crosswalks must be funded by the proponent for both installation and maintenance, as well as have the endorsement of the partnering municipality. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as chair and committee members Bennett, Hunt, Keller, Lynch, Robinson, and TJ. Thank you very much, Warden.
Thank you very much, Councillor Pickett. So, we'll begin at the start of your report under information. Item number one is the monthly project status report. Councillor Donahue.
Thank you, Madam Ward. Through you to perhaps Mr. Perkins, I note to Mr. Hanrath is in the room as well. I think if I'm reading this, I definitely need a new prescription for my eyeglasses on the monthly status report. It seems to me that there were two, I think they are both bridges that were anticipated to move into November to have a November completion. I'm wondering if that still stands, i.e. if essentially the construction season has wrapped up but for the Indian River Bridge, and I believe it is the Petawawa River Bridge, if those are the only outstanding items.
Mr. Perkins, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Ward, and through you to Councillor Donahue. Both contractors are running long, so the penalties will be enforced on, so they've been notified, but they should be completed, well, the one in Petawawa is definitely going to be completed before November 11th, and the other bridge is slated to be completed by mid-November.
Councillor Donahue, please.
Thank you, and through you, thank you to Mr. Perkins. And are those the only outstanding construction projects before the wrap-up of the season for 2022?
Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Ward, and through you to Councillor Donahue. Note, we have one road outstanding as well, but we are working with the contractor on that one as well.
Right, thank you. Are there any questions, any more questions, actually, on item number one? Item number two, the capital program variance report. Mr. Hanrath, would you like to come to the front? We did see this report during development proper, and I think it's so important for our members of council to see these projects in the beginning, in the end, and through it all, so, welcome, Taylor.
Thank you, Warden, and to all of council, thank you for the opportunity to come in and present and brag about what our staff have been able to accomplish this past year. So, on the presentation slide behind me, you can see the rehabilitation of County Road 7, Foresters Falls Road, in the hamlet of Foresters Falls. As you can see, this project is, in the photo, ongoing but nearing completion now. The project is being done by Greenwood Paving and was designed in-house. Shown here is the rehabilitation of County Road 29, drive-in road from the city of Pembroke Limits to Clearview Crescent in the township of Floridian Valley. Again, designed in-house and construction completed by Greenwood Paving. The photo on the right now has the white edge line applied, and the project is completed. Shown here is the rehabilitation of County Road 21, Beachburg Road, from Civic Address 1046 to the hamlet of Beachburg in the township of Whitewater Region. This project is being undertaken by H&amp;H Construction, and design was completed by Stan Tech Consulting. The project is much further along than shown in the photo on the right, they now have the base lift of asphalt applied, and will be doing top lift of asphalt next week. Shown here is the rehabilitation of County Road 67, Simpson-Pitt Road, from County Road 58, Round Lake Road to Buck Hill Road in the township of Killaloo-Haggerty and Richards. I may apologize for the missing township there. As shown in the photos, the project is now complete, the design was completed in-house, and the contractor was RGT Cluche Construction. Shown here is the superstructure replacement on County Structure B005, Scholar Bridge, on Pucker Street, 3 kilometers east of County Road 34, Norton Road, in the township of Vad Mastin Brumley. The photos are the during construction, but this project is now complete and the road is open to traffic. The design was completed by HP Engineering, and the contractor was BEI. Shown here is the rehabilitation of County Structure B022, Indian River Bridge, on Sandy Beach Road, 0.5 kilometers west of Highway 41, in the township of Floridian Valley. As discussed earlier, this bridge is still under construction, but we're pushing the contractor to complete before the end of November. The designer for this was WSP Canada, and the contractor is DW Building Restoration. Shown here is the superstructure replacement of County Structure B057, Mount St. Patrick Bridge, on Mount St. Patrick Road, 5 kilometers south of Highway 132, in the township of Greater Matawaska. The construction photos shown are from some time ago, this project is now complete and open to traffic as of today. The designer for this one was HP Engineering, and the contractor was GIP Inc., formerly Cocoa Paving. Shown here is the rehabilitation of County Structure B203, Petawawa River Bridge, on County Road 51, Petawawa Boulevard, 0.3 kilometers south of County Road 55, Paquette Road, in the town of Petawawa. The construction is much further along than the photos show. It is projected for, to be near completion on the specified date of November 4th. They do, may, sorry, they may require a couple more days just for cleanup. The designer for this one was WSP Canada, and the contractor was BEI. Shown here is the repair completed at B234, Coles Creek Bridge, just outside of Killaloo, on County Road 512, Queen Street. This was the bridge that was rehabilitated, not last year, but the year before, and there was a dip remaining after the construction. We went and did an in-house design and had Greenwood Paving come in to repair the dip. And shown here is rehabilitation of County Structure B319, Buchholz Bridge, on County Road 58, Round Lake Road, 0.1 kilometers north of Buchholz Road, in the township of Floridian Valley. Again, this construction is much further along than shown, they are falling slightly behind, though, and as Lee had indicated, we will be applying liquidated damages. The designer here is McIntosh Perry, and the contractor is GMP Contracting. Shown here is the replacement of County Structure C037, Baggett Creek Culvert, on Lower Spruce Heads Road, 2 kilometers east of County Road 508, Calabogie Road, in the township of Greater Matawaska. This project is now complete, and the road is open to all traffic. The designer was HP Engineering, and the culvert was installed by our in-house day labour crew. Shown here is the replacement of County Structure C152, Wadsworth Creek Culvert, on Old Berries Bay Road, 10 kilometers north of County Road 62, Kempermere Road, in the township of Matawaska Valley. This project is complete, the design was done by HP Engineering and was completed by our day labour forces. Shown here is the replacement of County Structure C269, Jack's Lake Culverts, on Round Lake, sorry, on County Road 58, Round Lake Road, 1.6 kilometers west of Jack's Lake picnic area, in the township of Killaloo-Haggerty and Richards. Again, designed by HP Engineering and completed in-house by our day labour forces. Shown here is the replacement of County Structure C302, Wingle Creek Twin Culverts, on Guarman Road, 4.1 kilometers south of County Road 70, Ruby Road, in the township of Killaloo-Haggerty and Richards. This design was completed, actually, in-house, and we had it reviewed by HP Engineering, and the contractor for this was our in-house day labour crew as well. That ends my presentation. Though I only showed 14 projects, there were many completed this year. We are projected to complete 16 road projects, 18 structure projects, 17 design projects have started. We also undertook our scratch code program and repaired, are in the process of repairing the Killaloo wall. This has been a joint effort between the operations division and the infrastructure division, there's been many staff involved, and we thank all of them for all their contributions throughout the year. I'll pause there if there are any questions or concerns.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hanrath, for that report, and please commend all of the staff involved in your department. I think, you know, just putting it out there, it wouldn't be a bad idea sometime to bring staff up from the public works department, the ones that are around at the time, just to, you know, meet council. There's a lot of money that goes through your department, and you're doing exceptional jobs, so good for you. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, this is an easy day for you. Thanks very much. Mr. Perkins, did you have any comments about number two at all?
Yes, thank you, Madam Ward, for the opportunity, yeah, obviously. Taylor and his team are doing outstanding work, and again, my thanks to our in-house day labour crew. I think once we do an analysis on what you'll see from the budget numbers, that the day labour crew is always on budget and on time. So, you'll see, hopefully, later in the next year, that Taylor will bring us a report that'll actually compare an apples-to-apples project, where we design in-house with Taylor's team, and then, of course, our public works day labour crew does the job, and it'll be compared directly to a project that was designed out of house and done by a contractor. So, again, I just thank mayor and council for keeping to the asset management plan, it makes our jobs a lot easier because we know where we're going in the future. And again, to Taylor and his team, and of course, to our operations group that are out there today, actually, in Killaloo fixing the Baptist Church wall, is a pleasure to go out and see what they accomplished during the summer. So, thank you for that opportunity, Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perkins, and I look forward to seeing how the department is reconfigured in 2023. I think it's going to be very exciting for the County of Renfrew. Item number three, winter operations status. Under resolutions, the Roma Conference delegation requests. Bylaws, the policy for decorative crosswalks. The report as a whole, do I have a mover? Oh, I'm sorry, Councillor Doncaster.
Thank you, Madam Ward, and I just wanted to make a comment that, and thank Councillor Pickett for being the Chair of the Operations Committee, and I would say through his leadership and the committee, that he wins the award for the most resolutions by committee coming to county council with 113.
I'm very impressed that you went and did that research, sir. Absolutely, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with Councillor Pickett, and especially the Chair of Operations. I've never seen a gentleman who is so involved and supportive of the staff. You have spent a lot of money, sir, you should be proud of that. But again, it's been our absolute pleasure having you as the Chair of Operations. So, do I have a mover for the report, sir?
So moved, Warden.
Thank you. All in favor of the report? Carried. Thank you very much. Finance and admin report, I'm assuming it is going to be the Vice Chair, Councillor Hunt.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Madam Ward. We, your Finance and Administration Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item, upcoming council meetings, County of Renfrew staff have been working on traditional County of Renfrew staff have been working on traditional materials and orientation meetings and they're listed there for your information. Item number two, retirement. We wish to congratulate Cindy Renaud Zibart on her retirement after 31 years of service with the County of Renfrew and to welcome Sarah Coppin into the internal. She was successful as the internal candidate for this position. Item number three, provincial offenses administration backlog. And you can see that there hasn't been much change in the backlog. Item number four, provincial offenses administration, Municipal Court Managers Association Conference. The following items were overviewed as part of this conference. A, modernization of the POA technology and court digital transformation. Item number B, justice of the peace recruitment process. And they're wrapping up the 2022 recruitment process and hope to fill 45 vacancies across the province. Item number C, MCMA committee updates. Within the Municipal Court Managers Association, there are a number of committees working diligently to ensure the best practices and standardizations are available to the provincial courts throughout Ontario. Item number five, 2022 Service Recipients Awards. As a result of COVID-19 pandemic, the County of Renfrew has not been hosting our annual employee service awards recognition dinner, but staff still have been recognized for their valuable service to the County of Renfrew. This year, we will be recognizing 71 service award recipients who have retained 10 to 40 years of service as well as 27 retirees. Our committee noted the importance and value of recognizing staff and retirees for all their hard work and dedication to the County of Renfrew and the committee would like to see some form of event continue in the future. Item number six, benefits renewals. The MBC voted to continue with Cohen Benefits Consulting Services and our renewal rates have been negotiated for 2023 with an overall increase of 8.9%. Moving to bylaws. Employment Bylaw Number One, Resolution Number FACC 221092. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that the County Council approve the following changes to the employment bylaw. Number one, effective October 1st, 2022. A, change of student wage from 1410 to 1460 for students under 18 and from $15 to $15.50 for students 18 and over, as outlined in Schedule A. And further, that the revised employment bylaw number one be adopted. And the background is there for your information. All of which is submitted by myself on behalf of Chair Murphy and Committee members, Bros, Doncaster, Dunnehu, Pecat, Robinson and Sweet.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hunt. We'll start at the beginning of your report under information. Item number one, the upcoming council meetings. Some of us don't have to worry about it, but others do. Number two, retirement in the Finance Division. Three, provincial offenses administration backlog. Number four, the Municipal Court Managers Association Conference update. Number five, the 2022 Service Awards and Retirees. I had the opportunity to sign a letter of thanks to all of the employees that are retiring this year and there's a significant number of them that have 20-plus years of service to the County of Renfrew. It is really unfortunate that we are not able to have a dinner and celebrate them in person. I was privileged to be able to attend the retirement dinners prior to COVID and just being able to have the directors of the various departments stand up and speak about the individuals that were retiring. It was just a really, really nice evening, so I do hope that we are able to do that in the future for folks. Mr. Kelly, please, sir.
Thank you very much, Warden, and certainly we understand that staff members are the lifeblood of this organization. We understand that and we absolutely heard your desire to continue with this recognition and the dinner, if you will, and we hope that 2023 will be a better environment for us to do that and properly plan an event. So when we do have it, you're all welcome back to have it next fall. But in the meantime, we do offer the following video as recognition for, gosh, hundreds of years of service that some of our members have had. Like the Warden, I signed letters for, gosh, several people that were over 40 years of service to the Corporation of the County of Renfrew. The likelihood of us seeing that again in today's workforce is very rare. So again, congratulations to all those and I'll ask Sean to run the video in recognition of that service.
Well, thank you very much for that video. And what I'm really pleased out of, the people who are smiling and retiring, the people that are smiling and staying are still smiling. So that is a really good, really good omen. Lot of Photoshop, no, no, not all. All right, thank you very much for that, Craig. Item number six, benefits renewal of services. Under bylaws, number seven, the employment bylaw. The report as a whole. Do I have a mover?
So moved, Madam Warden.
Thank you very much, Counselor Hunt. All in favor, the report is presented. Carried. We will turn it over to Counselor Bros, Chair of the Community Services Committee.
Thank you, Madam Warden. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, our Community Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Under resolutions, the Rural Ontario Municipal Association delegation requests regarding housing, Resolution Number CS-CC-22-10-73. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. County Council approved the submission of the following delegation requests for the Rural Ontario Municipal Association Conference, January 22nd to the 24th, 2023. The Associate Minister of Housing, Michelle Parsa, Affordable and Attainable Housing, and Minister Mayor Lee Fullerton, Ministry of Children, Community and Social Services, Increasing Social Assistance Rates for the Ontario Works and Temporary Care Assistance Program. Once again, the background is there. Item number two is the Licensed Home Child Care LHCC Expansion and its Resolution Number CS-CC-22-10-74. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. The County Council approve an increase of the presently approved operating capacity of 10 homes to the full licensed capacity of 25 homes. Once again, the background is there. This is just to improve efficiency so that the community services and childcare doesn't have to come back to council every time they want to add a few more of the licensed capacity homes. And under bylaws, we have an amendment to Bylaw 50-17, the County of Renfrew New Licensed Home Agreement. Resolution Number CS-CC-22-10-75. Moved by Chair, seconded by Committee. County Council approve that Bylaw Number 50-17, authorizing the County of Renfrew to enter into an agreement with licensed home childcare service providers, be amended to enter into an agreement with the following provider, Kim Lair in Pembroke. And again, the background is attached. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members, Grylls, Love, Regir, Reinwald and Robinson. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bros. We'll start at the beginning of the report. Under resolution, item number one, the Roma delegation requests. Any comments? Item number two, the Licensed Child Care Expansion. And number three, the Amendment to the County of Renfrew New Licensed Home Agreement. The report as a whole. Do I have a mover?
So moved, Madam Warden.
Thank you, all in favor? Carried, okay. There is no closed meeting, Mr. Kelly, correct?
That is correct, Warden.
Thank you. I now need a mover and a seconder that the bylaws listed on item 13 and attached hereto as Schedule A on the County Council Agenda dated October the 26th, 2022, be deemed read three times and passed. A mover and a seconder, please. Counselor Lynch, Counselor Hunt, all in favor? Carried, thank you. Number 14 is reports from external boards. Counselor Emo, you will do Emo, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to County Council. Very quickly, as you noted, we met on the 26th and the 7th of October with the Six Bean Orientation. So the first page just talks about the orientation, 444 municipalities, 421 members, six caucuses, you see them named, nine appointed positions, policy and advocacy role, and training updates for 2022 and 2023. From Emo, will be new head of council and counselor training, updated introductory strategic planning sessions and negotiating relationships and indigenous community planning and human rights and equity. Financial information, the budget will come forward to the board on the 25th of November. Canadian Community Building Fund, which used to be known as the Federal Gas Tax, and there's a report on the Emo website. Every year, 44 municipalities are audited and you can see the percentage so that it works out the same every year. And the findings, you see the findings, nothing really significant, just some minor little things that you worry about. The annual report shows that local government invested $730 million in 2089 local projects this year and the capacity building projects were worth about $13.8 billion. And so Infrastructure Canada has noted that there is some concern about the growing reserves and part of it was because there was a double payment in 2019 and double payment this year. And local municipalities, normally the payments come late in the year, so we're not able to utilize them until next year by the time you tender out a job. And so we pointed that out, told them, you know, we're doing a really good job and that it's in accordance with our long-term plans and by mandate, we're supposed to have asset management plans. And the fund was established in 2005 and Ontario municipalities own over 140,000 kilometers of roads and 15,000 bridges and large culverts and most of them are 50 years old. Note, in 2021, fire stations were made eligible and as a result, $18.1 million was invested in renovation or improving fire stations and nearly a million was built in investing, in building a new one. Bill three, still working on Bill three. And as the Warden mentioned earlier, there's a survey that's come out and we're asking for responses. One call, there's going to be penalties applied. The suggestion is municipalities aren't working fast enough. Our suggestion back to them in summation is that we don't have enough manpower first and secondly, we got some very incomplete drawings from developers. And so where they say there's a gas line or a hydro line or water lines may not be true and that's causing us some problems. You should note that the penalties will be applied or are proposed to be in place January 1 of next year. So you might want to start paying attention to that. Federal government is reviewing the Canadian Cannabis Act. We'll get more information for you. MPAC, we're in a little bit of a tussle with MPAC. They're saying that some of the municipalities aren't using the, using the information properly on their websites. We understand that the province has a $50 million revenue stream from this contract and it lasts until 2067, which is unusual. We also find out that Emo, or MPAC derives some revenue and they're very closed-mouthed about how much that is. So all of a sudden, it's not so much about data as we may be accidentally giving away free data or data that they would like to charge somebody for. So we're trying to sort that out. Executive Director's Report, you can see some of the things that are coming forward. The hybrid workplace policy is working well and they were preparing for the municipal elections, the draft budget. And part of the budget is we're going to go with four major or some major multi-year reserve funded projects. And one is We All Win, which is respect for democracy and civic engagement. A little worried about the tone of what we've been hearing on social media and just the attacks in the press from some members of the press and some people who pretend to be press like Ontario Proud and Canada Proud and Rebel News, people like that. And so that's going to be an issue. And then municipal workforce development, all worried about the number of bodies that are going to be in chairs in the next three to five years and where they're going to come from. And board vacancies, a request for our four nominations will come out in November with the appointments in March because there will be some board members who weren't reelected. Staff reports, waste management in Blue Box. $6.9 billion in the Continuous Improvement Fund, that's municipal money and we want that back. We've made a proposal on how to get it back and what we're going to use it for, which is to support the work of municipalities and also to make sure that we're getting good value for this sudden, or not so sudden, sorry, the change to producer responsibility. And then just the note, you're not free of Blue Box obligations. That's a holdover from last month. Public health, two letters to Minister Jones. We talked about strengthening public health and renewing the consultation. We asked for an inquiry into best practices province-wide for COVID and post-COVID recovery. And then another letter at the end of August, just talking about a government-to-government conversation. Municipalities spend a lot of money on health and we note there's a housing crisis, there's homelessness, there's mental health and a there's homelessness, there's mental health and addictions, there's poverty, and overcoming barriers to gaining and maintaining employment. And so we think there needs to be a big conversation. Primary care, mental health, and addiction services are desperately needed as well. And then again, threw in our public health modernization. We need a little clarity on that from them, what they're planning to do, if anything. And nothing new on any number of other issues on page nine. We're just holding those open. MEPCO, who is essentially Olmers, lost 4% or about half a billion dollars the first month of, first month of 2022 due to the uncertainty of the world economy. And we'll get an update on that in December. We're assured they're making very cautious investments. LAS update, cloud permitting and the value of e-permitting. So there's the partnership with cloud permit. And there's some other information you may want to take a look at. It might be beneficial to your local municipalities. A late August letter to Minister Clarke, increasing and preserving purpose-built rental housing, is our submission to him. And it's on our website, if you want to take a look at that. And it plays off these 15 recommendations and the five principles that were on the Emo website from last month. Quickly, Emo Conference 2022, over 2,000 delegates, 758 were members, 414 municipal staff, 175 provincial representatives, and four elected federal representatives. And sponsors and exhibitors, the revenues were up. I'll get you more information towards the end of the end of the year on that. 568 ministerial delegations. And there was a ministers forum with 28 ministers. You can see the media information down there, 380,000 Twitter impressions. I may have had three or four of those. 16 concurrent sessions. And then outstanding, the federal payments in lieu of taxes. Counselor Sweet will be happy to know that the letter to the federal minister from Minister Bethunfallvi very clearly indicated the concerns and cited the Pembroke example. And the very plummy CEO talked about the announcement yesterday. And so we'll get more information for you as fast as we can get them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Emo. Are there any questions for Counselor Emo, please? Counselor Donahue.
Not so much a question, as a comment. This is specific to the MEPCO update. And of course, there has been a great deal of global uncertainty, as there is certainly some upheaval in the globe. But just on the drive up here this morning, listening to the radio, we are all acutely aware right now of the substantial increase in the cost of food that I would urge perhaps through the channels that Counselor Emo sits on. Those seemingly are outstanding investments. The grocers, the grocery, food retailers in Canada whose profits are up 118% over the last normal year, which was 2019. Everyone, I think by now, is likely aware also that the Competition Bureau and the federal government unanimously, in the House of Commons, repeat that unanimously. There is almost no such thing as unanimity in the federal chamber. And yet unanimously, they are investigating. So I think that it is important at this point to recognize that there are a lot of basics or basis for why we are seeing, continuing to see a 6.9% inflation.
Thank you, Counselor Donahue. Counselor Emo?
Thank you. My own amateur methods of investing, I bought Dollarama stock. And it really's gone off, it's gone off the, just blew up. First time in my life, I'm going to make some money at something. So I'm very impressed with myself.
Well, congratulations, sir, on that. I just, I want to comment too. I had the opportunity to sit on the Emo Board as the Chair of the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. And there's a whole lot of really like-minded, really hardworking folks there. And certainly among them is our representative, Peter Emo. So, you know, I'm very pleased, Peter, that you will be returning to that position. And we are very, very well-served. So thank you for all of the efforts you've put in over the last number of years. Any other further comments? Seeing none. I'm going to play fast and easy with this agenda because it's my last meeting. And I don't think you can do it. Well, there may be something procedurally you can do about it, but I'm going to ask you not to. I am going to ask that Counselor TJ come up to the podium, please, ma'am. I first met Counselor TJ, I believe I was probably working for the newspaper at the time and covering county council. And she certainly, as you all know, leaves an impression. And then actually, I had the opportunity to work with her when we were part of the Renfrew County Advisory Group for the Lynn at that time. She was chairing it, and I was very, very impressed with that as well. So you've been watched from afar, from some admirers over the years. I will tell you that absolutely, for sure. And some of those admirers are here today that I've asked to come and speak. So I will start with Counselor Sweet, please, sir. I would love you to come up here, yes.
Well, thank you very much, Warden. It's certainly my pleasure to say a few words about this young lady that's standing beside me. You've got to be very sensitive when you talk about ladies and years of service. They tend to be a little bit sensitive about that particular situation. But I would be remiss if I did not indicate that what you're looking at in Janice is 37 years of service to the County of Renfrew, starting in 1985. And it wasn't in this location either. It was down on William Street in the city of Pembroke. So Janice obviously has seen a lot of changes over the years, including what has happened here in this business. Also, recognize, Janice, she was the warden of our county in 2007 and 2008 as well. And I traveled with Janice all over the place in my capacity as Chair Development of Property. And Janice nominated me for warden as well. And I want to say thank you. And I think we could always rely on Janice, as you probably have seen, to be very to the point when it came to certain things that she did not agree with over the years. But nonetheless, Janice is going to be missed. I'm sure the election was not what she thought it was going to be or the result. But nonetheless, thank you, Janice, for all your service to the County of Renfrew. 37 years is something to be very proud about. So congratulations to you for a job well done. Thank you.
Counselor Emo, could you come up, please, sir?
I don't like this one.
So I have to apologize to Janice for one thing I've ever done to her that was sort of funny. Doug Raycraft, who Janice and I both know, we were at Osum and pitching. And Bob was there pitching for the conference. And Janice came in and I said, oh, Doug Raycraft's doing a presentation. He wants you to come and talk to him about Killaloo Schools and some of the work you've done on it. He's waiting, just jump up and say something. So he's in the middle of a presentation, and Janice bounds up and gives him some kind of a dissertation as she could back out. In front of a bunch of people called me to the lowest. It wasn't a pleasant thing, but it was hilarious. We had a good laugh about it, but oh my God, it was hilarious. But Janice and I, I've known Janice for a number of years. But I came here in 2006, and she was the first phone call I had when I was elected mayor and talked about the county and the important things we do here and where do you fit in. And, you know, I enjoyed working with her when she was warden. And then again, when I was warden, she was, I chose Janice as my deputy warden for a number of reasons. But the most important was I needed her experience. And I didn't need the information she could provide. And I also needed some of her contacts. She is very well-connected in the community across all of Renfrew County and into the province and through eastern Ontario. And I always admired her tenaciousness. And I don't mean that in a negative way. Her tenaciousness with an issue, you know, whether it was forestry. I know we went to Queens Park a couple of times to talk about Algonquin Park and protecting the fiber basket. And we went a couple of times to talk about fish, I believe, as well. And so I always admired, you know, she's very to the point. And we were able to tag-team on some of the issues. And she was very good about listening and adding to the message or allowing me to add to the message or anybody else in the room. So I always appreciated that team effort. Also, when she was Chair of Health and as warden, when you're now in the community, I was always, I liked the empathy and the understanding and the kindness she showed our residents in the long-term care facilities. And she recognized that was a community. That was their community, and we were a guest. And, you know, I really enjoyed watching her interaction with them. I also admire, you know, Janice has shared over the years some of her personal struggles. And I've admired her strength and her ability to bounce back and get up tomorrow and take on the world. And so thank you, Janice. Okay. So going to miss you, and thank you.
Janice, I know you said no more. There is one more.
Okay.
Chief Nolan, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And thank you, Janice. We were together for a very long time. I never had a Chair as passionate, as diligent, and as committed to the community as you have been. I think you've been my Chair longer than anybody else in my time here at the county. And, you know, I speak on myself and Shelley. Shelley was here today. I'm sure she would agree that the breakfast meetings that we had, the tears that we've shared, the experiences that we were able to translate into action in the community based upon your own personal experiences, but also based upon what you heard from residents across the county, translated into some very real things. The entire public access defibrillation program in Renfrew County is to Janice's credit. The fact that we've moved those defibrillators out of behind desks and buildings and are now hanging on the outside wall of buildings and heated cabinets are because of Janice. And much of the community paramedic program and its success is owed to Janice's "just get it done" attitude. So, you know, I will always remember, and I'll speak on Shelley's behalf as well, because Janice made us part of her family. Been to your house. We've cared for you and your loved ones. And at the same time, only in a very small way, been able to reciprocate your passion, your dedication, and your commitment to this community. And for that, I want to thank you for being an incredibly strong supporter, an incredibly competent and capable Chair, and someone who we've had the privilege of turning your vision into action over the years. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Chief Nolan. I am going to open up if there are any other members of county council would like to speak and make her cry a little bit more. Counselor Donahue, please.
Thank you so much, Madam Warden, for affording the opportunity. And I want to express, you know, enormous gratitude. It was said, 37 years that Janice has devoted to her community of Killaloo Haggerty Richards. I'm assuming, I'm not sure which of those that only came into being in 2000 with amalgamations. That's an outstanding contribution. And it is quite fascinating as well is the thread was still in this room, has been still in this room to when we drove downtown to what the courthouse is now, when that was the county building. That thread is now ending. That is the history that Janice has participated in over a long career in serving her community. Have to acknowledge Janice's passion. It is invigorating to have engaged in vigorous debate with Janice here in this room to disagree without being disagreeable. It is terribly important in this room. It has been an outstanding career. I cannot imagine how many lives Janice has touched, whether it's in her community or whether it was in her capacity as the Chair of Health and the residents of long-term care. The residents are served by the paramedic service. I scarcely think that there is not someone or that there is anyone in Renfrew County that has not at one time or another been affected by Janice. The only thing that I do have to wonder in the end is if she has in fact established a record. Because if I recall reading, and we do have the publisher of the Eaganville Leader with us today, I'm not sure that it's been Janice TJ Visnesky, Moore, Moore, Bush, or Visnesky over the course of those 37 years of which one has been sitting in this room. Regardless of the name, by very nature, has been an incredible contribution to this County of Renfrew. Thank you, Janice.
And I would just add that you really never needed a last name. You just said Janice. People definitely knew who we were speaking of. Is there any other county council would like to speak? Counselor Brows, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden. And I just wanted to thank Janice for her support, being a neighbor in municipality. And when I first got into politics, her support was very important. And also, the leadership she showed and the stick-to-it-ness and the tenacity that Peter spoke about in getting that Bonshaw River Water Management changed so that it was a benefit to not only the residents of Killaloo Haggerty Richards, but also North Algonquin Wilberforce and Bonshaw Valley, and helping to mitigate some of those flooding concerns and issues. So again, thank you so much, Janice, for the support you've given me.
Are there any other councillors? Counselor Reinwald, please.
Thank you, Madam Warden. This is going to be a little shorter and probably not as sweet as the others. But Janice has been my next-door neighbor for eight years now. And I remember when I first sat in here, we had a good chat. And I remember when I first sat in here, we had a good chat, and I said, "What the heck do I have to do here?" And she said, "Just stick with me." She said, "I'll pull you through." I'll never forget that. And eight years to the day, almost, I'm still sitting beside her, we always have our little chats, and I remember one conversation that was taking place here in council, I didn't quite understand what was going on, and I sw- leaned over to Janice, and I said, "What the heck's happening here?" And she says, "Oh, that's a pile of BS, don't worry about it." So, Janice was always a straight shooter, straightforward. We had our good chats, our good talks, and a lot of fun. So, Janice, I'm not gonna be here over the next term, and I'm certainly gonna miss you as my neighbor, so take care of yourself.
Anyone else before I turn the mic over to Janice? It's all yours.
This is a surprise, I'll tell ya. Thank you very much for all the kind words. I've enjoyed my 37 years here. We've gone through a lot of transitions, a lot of changes. When I started, there was 36 of us. And those times, it was interesting, 'cause we had so many discussions and disagreements that often, we seen people stand up wanting to fight. And even though I wasn't one of those, I decided in my career that I would fight for my township, Killaloo Haggerty Richards. Now, on the 24th of October, I lost the election. And I don't think it's a loss. I think what it's done for me is, it's kicked me out because I may have never decided to retire. And I'm going to enjoy that retirement. My husband, I work for my husband, so I'll be able to now dedicate my full time to his practice and to my family. My three grandsons always told me, "How come, Grandma, you always have to go to meetings?" Now I can say I don't have to go. All the kind words, thanks, guys. Peter, you made me cry. And Peter and I have locked horns many times. I have to tell you that what he did to me at that conference, and I stood up in front of a thousand people, and talked about my experience with the closure of schools, and Mr. Raykraft is looking at me like, you know, and I thought, I'm saying, "What the hell is Doug looking at me?" Like, Peter said, he wanted me to speak. Anyways, after we finished, Doug came over and he said, "What the, blah, 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 what are you doing up there?" I said, "Well, Peter..." He said, "Oh, Peter's so full of it." Anyway, so, Peter made me feel humiliated in front of a thousand people, so I'm sorry, but I went out and I told him exactly what I thought of him, so, Peter. I've made a lot of friends here over the years. To Jed and Tom, you're my neighbors, and what two truly, truly wonderful human beings I had the pleasure of sitting beside. They're gentlemen to the core, and they always made me feel special. They listened when I was mad at something, and they listened to my going blabbing on and on and on. Sometimes they voted with me, and sometimes they didn't, but I have a lot of respect for you two gentlemen. You're very special in my hearts. And to everyone else that got elected, and you have to come back to this place for four years, I wish you the very best. Like I said, I've had lots of experiences here, made lots of friends, and Chief Nolan exactly said, "I went through a terrible year in 2017. I was in a huge car accident, my house burned down to the ground, my husband died, and I lost two of my precious colleagues." And Chief Nolan and Shelley called me and said, "What can we do to help you?" They offered to come and make chili when I was moving. Those are things that don't happen everywhere, in every corporation. So, thank you very much for being my friend. And I'm usually a person, and you all know this, that talks very short and sweet, but I am passionate about this place. So, please, please, consider the taxpayers of Renford County, 'cause that's all that I ever did. I tried to represent my township and the county wherever I went. So, thank you for this, I'm honored. And I'm moving on, you know? I know I have a good life ahead of me, and I'm still young enough to do a lot of things, and I'm going to. My political career is ending, and that's not a bad thing. I'm gonna have more time for Noah, Owen, and Caleb, my three grandsons, and my husband, who, when I lost, he come over and he hugged me and he said, "Janice, I don't wanna say this, but this is a good thing. I'm gonna have more of you to myself." So, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, Madam Warden, thank you for this honor. I do really appreciate it. And to the staff, you guys are great. I worked with lots of you more closely than I did with others. Jeff, you've been around a lot of time, and, you know, I came a long time ago. We've gone through a lot of staff since I've gone, and I'm sure some of you wanted to kick me many times, but just remember, I'm a passionate woman. I believe in my taxpayers, and I believe in my township and the county of Renford. Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Janice, it's my pleasure to present to you, in recognition of your contribution as a County Counselor at the County of Renford, Janice TJ, 1988 to 2022.
Thank you very much. By the way, it was Janice Bush, Janice Visnesky, Janice Visnesky Moore, and now Janice TJ. Thank you. No, no, they didn't.
Oh, my gosh. It's heavy?
Okay, can I put that back in the box so I don't...
Well, we're gonna take it out still.
Oh, yeah, okay. Oh, my gosh, thank you very much. Oh, it is heavy. Thank you. Yeah. Do you want me to hold this?
No, just... Janice TJ, 1988 to 2022. We will be recessing for lunch. I will ask that any of the former Wardens that are in attendance, and I'm sorry, Counselor Murphy, you were not able to be here, but we would like a photo of the Wardens who are in attendance today with Janice. Thank you very much. We will now break for lunch, and we will come back at 2 o'clock.
Please be seated. Well, I trust everyone had an enjoyable lunch. It was really great to be able to spend an hour chatting with everyone. So it's really, really, really good day. So again, thank you, councillor Ema for the Ema report. Councillor Murphy, is there a report from EORN?
Madam Warden, there is not at this time.
All right. Thank you very much. Councillor Doncaster, you did provide us with an excellent report from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. I'll turn it over to you, please, sir.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I won't go through the report in great detail other than to say that a lot of the meetings that I attended in Strathcona County in September were around infrastructure and funding. I think most of us will be aware that a lot of the funding programs that we have are coming due to expire within the next year or so. So FCM has started to put together formulations on what we think the, or what municipalities need and presenting that to the federal government to form the basis for the next infrastructure funding programs that we'll have. FCM also continues to advocate for continued increases in the Canada Community Building Fund. And then the other things that are in that report, I would, I mean, I would encourage you to read the whole thing. It's only seven pages, but some of the key points on page seven, I think that kind of summarizes the meetings, where it summarizes, although there's certainly a lot more detail at the meeting itself. And all very important. And as I mentioned before, at each county council meeting, I'll continue to focus on one area and highlight that for county council. But further to that, I would say that just as important as the information that staff provides and the debates and discussions that we have at committees, just as important as that are the conversations that we have in the hallways and at dinner and with colleagues from right across this country, from north to south, east to west, and hearing what other communities are doing to tackle, you know, the opioid crisis or the housing and homelessness crisis, or anti-racism and so on and so on. So those conversations are really valuable. And I'll try to highlight those as we move on through 2023. So I'll leave with that and if there's any questions.
Thank you very much, councillor Doncaster. Is there any questions for councillor Doncaster? Seeing none, thank you very much for an excellent report. Roma, councillor Ema?
Thank you. To be brief, Warden, through you. We met October 14th and you'll see the financial information. Nothing's really changed. We're down about $40,000 in terms of our unrestricted reserve. And the conference generated $408,000 in revenue. Proximal surplus is $59,000. We'll get more information for you towards the end of the, towards the end of the year. Decrease in paid attendees, conference revenue was down a bit. Again, it was a virtual conference. Next page, Roma 2023, just for reference. I should say 2020, just under 1,000 people attended. And then there are six concurrent sessions and building code challenges, blue box, circular economy, a couple of the other ones, economic impact of waterfront owners by, and FOC, and that's the Federation of Ontario Owners Association. Succession management, so some very good, very good sessions. And the estimate for revenue is about 895 with our costs being about $700,000. We were at the International Plying Match, we're at EMO, and Rural Ontario Institute, where what we worked out was a community wellbeing project and the housing project with the Eastern Ontario Wardens data and tool. And then some youth initiatives. So those are the things we're working on with the Rural Ontario Institute. with the Rural Ontario Institute. Constitution, if you look over there, you'll see that, oh, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned the presentation from MISA, the Municipal Information Systems Association. They developed with EMO municipal cybersecurity toolkit, and they're developing training with LAS for small rural Ontario municipalities to have incident response plans in the event of a cyber attack. And we note that IT is often a many-handed person in a smaller municipal shop or with a contractor offsite. So we think this is a valuable addition and would encourage you to take a look at it. And the Roma Constitution, we just went, we had to post some things. We did that preparing for a January election. There were four-year terms in the zones, there were 10 zones, 10 zones, I'm sorry. Nomination call went out on the 18th of October, and will end December 26th. And waste management, similar to what I presented in the, in the report for EMO. And then the next page, number two, tiny, tiny teeny summit, November 30th is a, is a session, and then also March the 1st. So if you want to go online and take a look at those. Housing, just more, a little more about her paper. And of note, we understood that at the last executive meeting with the province at the MOU table, there was a lot of mentions about the paper that we just released. Drainage Act, the federal government received a letter from the minister asking them that we wanted to meet to talk about it. And I'd like to note, and I forgot to add this the last time, I'd like to thank councillor Kim Love for all of her hard work. She was always thinking and delivering a clear, concise, and well-thought-out message. She didn't offer advice until she could tell you the impact and the benefit to her community. So we'll certainly miss her at Roma and here as well. And that's my submission to you, Warden. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ema. Are there any questions for councillor Ema? And again, I will add my thanks to councillor Love for the years that she attended this council and was always, as Peter has said, very thoughtful in her process and a huge contributor to us. All right. Thank you. That ends our reports. I do hope that this will, is a practice that will continue with the next council. I think that having the reports presented by our representatives is very important, and it just allows us to be more in tune to what's happening out there across the province. So again, thank you for all of, to all of our representatives for all of the work that you do to make sure that we're kept abreast. Thank you. Is there any notice of motions, Mr. Kelly?
None received to date. Thank you, Warden.
Any members' written motions?
Sorry, that was a question?
Yes, that was.
I'm kidding. No, there are no submitted questions.
Any new business?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Seeing none. Number 18. Can I hand, leave that over to you, I suppose?
Yes, you can. Thank you very much. May I use the podium, Warden?
If you have to, Mr. Kelly.
With that, I will take the podium, but I'd like to ask councillor Donahue and councillor Ema to make a presentation to Warden Debbie Robinson. I want you over here, too.
Thank you, Craig. This is an incredible honor, I'm sure. As councillor is aware, I was very honored when Debbie asked me each of the three years that she's been warden to move her nomination. And I can't express to you how relieved I am that all of the things that I told you she would be, it turns out she was those things, and she lived up to what I had suggested that she could do. Very relieved because I thought that that was probably going to add some time in purgatory for some of the, you know, mistruths that I might have stretched a bit. But in fact, Debbie has been an outstanding warden in one of the years, and I cannot recall which. She is now only the second warden to have presided while there was a global pandemic. So that, of course, is underpinning everything else that has happened. It has been an incredibly eventful time under Debbie's stewardship here. Certainly, the redevelopment of this facility. I think Nujimagamig, I apologize for that. The Healing Garden, the Reconciliation Garden, I think that that is certainly a crowning achievement, and I think long overdue here. And I'm sure that you will, all of council, like me, can celebrate. One of the biggest innovations has been the seven-hour virtual meetings of council. I think that is a legacy that is unlikely to be overshadowed anytime soon. It has been an astonishing ride, Debbie, and I am so honored to have been along for the ride with you and under your guidance and stewardship. So thank you.
Thank you very much. So you go from the brazen to the bland. It was a real pleasure to, to second Debbie's nomination and also more specifically to work with her over these many years. I know when she first got to county council, we had a number of conversations and talked about, you know, the need for her to prepare herself to be a warden. But she ended up being the warden as opposed to at warden. Many of us can be at warden, but it takes someone to be the warden. And in times of crisis, you want someone who is a leader. You want someone who's clear in their, in their thinking, thinks ahead, and plans to initiate responses. And I think when you take a look at what's happened with VTAC, you look what's happened with, as Michael has said, the virtual meetings, just the ability to, to transition to that style of meeting where there was no style, there was no substance to it, and to come crashing into our rec rooms and living rooms at nine o'clock in the morning the very first time. And how do we use these hands? And how do we speak? And how do we put our hands up? And who takes turns? And so it was phenomenal. She was able to do that with calmness and grace. And as I said, that's what you want with the warden. And you didn't want at warden. We got the warden, and we got the proper warden. We had good leadership at, at the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. All of those things, as Michael has said, that he told me to say about Debbie, he was right. And I'm very appreciative of him for writing my speech that day. And, and to Debbie, thank you very much for your time, your energy, your forethought, and most definitely your leadership and your friendship.
I really wasn't planning to do a speech because, again, as everyone knows, I don't want to cry. It's my ugly, ugly crier person. I've cried enough. I cried enough when I announced my intention to retire, so I am not going to cry today. It's been a wonderful time. All of you have been so fantastic. And here, see, it's starting. So I'm not going to embarrass myself, but thank you. Every, every one of you know how, know how I feel about you. So again, thank you for everything.
Thank you, councillor and councillor. And unfortunately, the warden doesn't get off that easy. I know, this is my last day here. She gives me a look. Now, the warden made a specific request that she made, a big thing would be made about her today, sorry, that it wouldn't have a big thing made about her today. But staff, and of course, we feel it's very appropriate that we celebrate from a staff perspective, the impact that the warden has had on the last three years, and of course, her whole term of council. It's been a challenging few years. We've said it many times before. And the warden, as the councillors have already said, has led the way through this entire time, and we're thankful for that personally. And I know Paul echoed this when he left. It's been a pleasure working with you. I'm sure we could have accomplished a lot, but you're leaving, so I'll have to do it on my own in my plum jacket, as pointed out earlier. But, Warden, it's been a pleasure. And some things can always, hard to say in words, so in true fashion that we normally do, we've made a video about you. Shaun.
I thought somebody turned off my mic for a second. I'm really looking forward to those strong mirror powers, actually.
You're not a very, you don't listen very well, correct? But honestly, thank you so much, everyone. It's really appreciated.
Thank you, Warden. So, and now we're going to move on to the last part of the day, a celebration and a thanks and congratulations to all those leaving and returning. With that, I'll assist the warden. Okay. In no particular order, well, let's see who you've got them all by name. Thanks very much. I don't know what I'm going to do without her here telling me what to do. So it's going to be very interesting. Right, Paul? Councillor Brian Hunt, please.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. And sorry, councillor Hunt, of course, you've represented the township of Greater Matawaska very well. And thank you very much. I'd wanted to acknowledge your, your municipality. So again, from the township of Brudel, Lindock and Raglan, councillor Sheldon Keller. From the township of McNab Brayside, councillor Tom Pickett. Tom, we're all very now curious on what your fortune cookie actually said, just so you're aware of that. I've been, I've been instructed to, to suggest that Tom's fortune said, be prepared to receive something special. So how apropos for today's meeting. From the township of Whitewater Region, Catherine Gere. So for years, while I've been a staff member and now CAO, it's, it's either Jeb or Jed or anything else. But from the town of Laurentian Hills, councillor Reinhold.
You will be showered with good luck.
And to, of course, one of the true champions of economic development in my career over the years, from the town of Pettawawa, Mayor Bob Sweet. The Warden asked if we're done. Of course, we're not because of last and certainly not least, Warden Debbie Robinson from the township of Laurentian Hills, or Laurentian Hills, Laurentian Valley. I'm just going to...
He's still on probation.
We, of course, will have the Going Away Award delivered to councillor Kim Love in Matawaska Valley, unfortunately, who cannot be here with us today. And, Warden, that is the presentation of the awards. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. I now need a mover and a seconder that the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the county of Ranford at the meeting held on October the 26th, 2022. Be now numbered, deemed read three times and passed. A mover and a seconder, please. Moved by councillor Bennett, seconded by councillor Reinwald. All in favour? Carried. Thank you. Now I'm, oh, go ahead.
Just before, thank you, Warden, through you, just before the Warden closes the meeting, I do want to make note of those returning. If I could, just a reminder of the November 9th deadline to file your nomination papers for Warden, should you be so inclined to do so. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kelly. I highly recommend it, by the way, anyone wants to be Warden. It's a wonderful experience. So who would like to adjourn the final county council meeting of this term? Councillor Doncaster, councillor Donahue. All in favour? Carried. Thank you very much, everyone. It's been a great term.